Morning, everyone. We'll start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sweet. We got a huge rowdy gallery today. Do we, uh, do we have any, uh, agenda, uh, any agenda items to change, add? Any confirmation? All right, I'll entertain a motion then to approve the agenda. So we got a motion by Phil. Do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Erica. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion carries. Uh, minutes from May twentieth. Do we have any adjustments?
You got the Dutton rather than Benton?
I had Yellowstone on my.
I didn't, I didn't. Was that in the minutes?
It was in my resolution.
Yeah.
Sweet.
Did you fix it?
On the resolution?
Uh huh.
Mm hmm.
Mr. Chair.
Yep.
On page two, two hundred appointments. I think the Pelican Water should, I think the dates of the terms should be on, on the.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
And I don't know, I think it's, it was reappoint Scott Busker, but I suppose that would be appropriate because he was, but he was.
He was filling that.
Filling in, so, but I think that's fine.
Yeah. Be a reappoint, or.
I think.
Well, he was, yeah, he, we appointed him previously to fill out the terms, so it's probably a reappointment.
And then on the last page on four, four, and there, uh, probably the, just on the, on the sale of the Yamaha ATV and then the purchase of the, I think, uh, the amount and then the, um, that this was grant funding and with grant funding to pay the difference.
Do we, we, the amount of, do we want them?
The amount of the new one?
What was it?
Nine thousand nine.
It should be, and it should be low quote, not low bid.
Yeah.
Low quote of from Oakston for the amount, and just include them on.
Nineteen.
Yeah, ninety-nine.
Ninety-nine hundred, yeah.
Eighty or something, but.
Yeah.
We have to get that amount.
Yeah.
And that's all I have for the May twentieth.
Does anybody have any more for the May twentieth? All right, do we have a motion to approve the May twentieth minutes?
Second.
Second by Phil.
Phil.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion carries. So minutes from May twenty-seventh.
Mr. Chair, there wasn't really much detail, but I, I just thought maybe on the work session, I think we should just highlight a couple of the things on what we did. Rather, I mean, it just says work session, but just say the board, um, reviewed these to, you know, these topics for.
Yeah.
Future consideration or some, you know, cause it, just presented by Ryan Seelock. I don't know. It just, it should be just a little bit in there, um, that it was.
The, what we do well in the budget.
Discussing budget, budgeting process or something.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Nelson, you know, we did talk about some one year. Remember at the last, last question was, what would you like to see in a year?
Mm hmm.
More, uh, more data, uh, be transparent, capital approval plan. Those are kind of some of the things that we discussed.
Yeah, even if we just say, you know, the board looked for, you know, um, budget, budget process improvements and, and goals for, for the one year and, and long-term future. I mean, I just think a little, little bit of, di, little bit of detail that would be.
I'll move to approve the May twenty-seventh minutes with, uh.
That addition.
Commissioner Nelson's additions.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Phil, second. Uh, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion carries. All right, consent agenda. Do we have any items in the consent agenda that we would like to pull out?
Um, I don't have any, I just had a couple of questions on the, the eddy current.
Yeah.
Yeah, we did, we did tell Steve yesterday.
So I think we should pull the eddy current and put it under Steve, cause he's got another item to talk about.
Good.
Cause I, I, I think it's important to, just because of the price and what it is and, okay. So we'll put that under. Yep, under land use environmental is number two. And then does anybody want any clarification on the two transit motions, um, this number seven and eight? Or is everybody okay with those? Okay. Cause I, I just, cause Phil and I were in the meeting, so we could clarify it now if you had any questions.
I'm gonna talk about it on my report.
Yeah, I am too, so, or you are one of us.
Oh, great. Both of them talking about it.
I'll let Phil do it, then I won't talk about it. Mister Tucker over there. All right, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda by, in pulling number five out?
Some of.
All right, so motion by Erica, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Barry. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion carries. All right, open forum. Is there anybody on the open forum? All right. So we'll go to reports and correspondence. Who would like to go first?
We'll happily go first. Um, I might try to limit myself to three minutes.
I'm timing you now.
Three minutes for committee or three minutes total?
No, total, total. Twenty-first, uh, met with the watershed, uh, we're gonna get into the, the, well, we approved the last meeting, the thirty thousand, to get rid of the building there. Uh, we need to talk to Jim about getting that building out of there, selling it, doing whatever we can, the watershed building. We're gonna talk about that in, in meeting tomorrow, in our highway meeting. Jim Holson, cause we gotta put it up for bids.
But why, why is he the one? Just out of here yesterday, I don't know.
Because I can't go out and say, hey, can you take that building down? And he could put up for bids is what I.
Okay.
For, to get rid of the building up there.
Well, yeah, I mean, Jim could.
This isn't my time.
I, I would assume Steve, I mean, NRM could do it. And then I think the full discussion is, I think we need to look at the full plan on that park, rather than just go ahead and get rid of it this year.
We'll work on that in subcommittee.
Well, I, I'm not so sure that as we move forward, if we, if we establish, I mean, are we looking at the parking committee this year? Cause that's an NRM issue. If we're not, and we need storage, it might be something that we just put on the, make a gravel parking for, for currently, so.
Yes, yep. All right, we'll come back with some suggestions and supplement.
What committee? Well, it's not a highway project.
It's gonna be NRM.
It would be an, I mean, the parking area for the park is NRM.
I mean, if he wants to.
If we need a bid on it, we could ask for Jim's assistance, in my opinion.
Okay, yep.
Yeah, but would, maybe we would try and sell it, no?
Again, it's.
Right, is that what you're thinking?
Yes, absolutely.
It's, it's the long-term.
Yeah, and I'm not saying we have to do it now, but.
But it's, but it's, it's a long-term planning for the natural resource management committee, because that's in the.
He's talking time.
I did, I did.
Right.
So I mean, I think this, and Carrie can, I, I really don't care if we sell it, if it goes where it goes, but, I mean, through highway or.
And maybe we can.
Think you need to coordinate which committee that goes through then.
Correct. Okay, uh, airport, I had airport on the twenty-first, uh, Carrie and I were there. A lot of construction going out there, parking lot paving, fuel, system upgrade, T-hangers, you've probably seen them. Um, there is gonna be an ask coming, um, back in two thousand seventeen, the county committed, I got the resolution, to a million dollars for one runway expansion, so, um, that's coming to an end. But there is gonna be an ask coming soon.
For more money?
I would assume, I would assume they're saying that they, they have money left over from the original project, that that's not how government, this government works. You get the project completed, that money doesn't sit there waiting for that entity to spend it at a later date. Just so you know, I'm not gonna be real supportive of, oh, you didn't spend enough money earlier, so we saved you money, so we're gonna spend that money that you committed to, but we didn't spend on that project. We wanna roll it over to another project. That's not how government projects work.
You know, I looked at the resolution, there was a commitment from a million, for a million dollars.
Up to one, for that project.
For that project.
Yes. And that project is complete.
How much did they?
Well, it's, they're, they're saying it's not complete.
Okay, well.
So that, that will be the discussion, is what you're saying.
Yes, you can't just keep adding on.
How much should we, how much should we spend, or how much?
We're at eight fifty-six, something like that. The additional ask is gonna be for about eighty-four. Um, okay, we'll get to that when the time comes. Prairie Lakes, uh, putting some ash on that county highway seventy-five, we're trying to, we're still working on that. Um, I'm gonna be on the budget committee for Prairie Lakes. Uh, we're meeting June twentieth, is our first meeting. Transit, can anybody tell me how many staff Transit has? Not you. Kevin.
Kevin was here. Are you asking a rhetorical question or a serious? Asking, are you testing our knowledge, or do you wanna know what the answer is? Or you have the answer? Um, I would assume we have.
Ten.
I would say we have at least a dozen volunteer dryers and, and two in the house.
Twelve.
Thirteen staff.
God, that's cool.
Ridership is up eight percent. Um, county share of our costs, it went down after COVID. The county, or the, the state was paying ninety-five percent. Now they're gonna move it back to ninety for twenty-twenty-six, so we're gonna have to come up with a little share there. We're, we're putting in to replace two buses. The buses are a hundred fifty-six thousand dollars each. We can't even put in the order until September, October. That's the order, let alone when the bus gets here. So, we're gonna, that's coming up later in the agenda. We suggested maybe using a sheriff squad car or something else to transport people. Kevin was gonna look into it. Planning and zoning, big thing there was, um, uh, gravel permit out between Cormera and Pelican Lake. Uh, a lot of people stood, a lot of neighbors stood up against that. Kyle's gonna do a finding of fact. We're gonna meet here in another week. Environmental, we're rolling out organics, um, and then we, we'll talk about this eddy drum repair. Um, I and Richard hopefully are gonna take a tour of the, uh, regional facilities, uh, with Steve. Just go around and see what else is out there and see how we can collaborate and if there's anything we can do. And I, I mostly just wanna see what else is out there. That is it.
That's pretty good.
All right. Um, I could go next, so.
One second over.
That's not bad.
My computer might have been slow.
That's not bad.
Yeah.
Um, so we had, Richard and I had, uh, the ED, our EDA meeting. There is currently an RFP in Prezey for multi housing, housing development on city-owned land. Just if there's any contractors interested, there's land available in Prezey. Um, we went over the audit, there was no concerns, just a couple housing updates. There's currently one vacant unit in our public housing. Um, continue to work through, um, twenty-one applications on the waiting list. Um, they're assisting fifty-seven families for, through the housing choice voucher program. They have a hundred and twenty applications on the waiting list. Maple Avenue in Prezey is full. Um, there, we're currently working on that RFP still to do some work on the outside of the building. And West River Town Homes, there, um, twelve units there, all of them are full, and twelve of those housing cho, choice vouchers are used there. Um.
How is the, how are the, is it being managed well now, better now? I mean, there's not as many issues going on?
Well, no, it's, it's still of all of our housing project, projects, that's the one that has the most turnover. We do still have Mahubi there doing, I, I think they allocate twenty hours a week to, for case management for those. Um, it's a, it's a long-term homelessness housing facility. Um, then the only other thing, uh, we have our Hidden Hills group home, which we lease to Lakes Home, and we just got our, um, lease updated for that. And then we also discussed the extension building, um, because that's been kind of a hot topic on our board. Um, the EDA, just so this board knows, is not, um, necessarily in favor of getting rid of it. There are some ideas that are floating around of things that we could do with the building to, um, fulfill our mission of economic development in Becker County.
Um, speaking of our mission in economic development, um, Carrie, we probably should see a report, I mean, a report of what's been accomplished in the EDA.
Mm hmm. From Cody.
Mr. Chair.
We housed some people.
Well, I mean, we were promised when this went full-time that we would see twenty-fold money investment return, and, um, I just, it's, it's a position, and I think the employee is a wonderful, I, I think, I think he's utilized in other areas better than the actual EDA at times, so, um.
He's actually, you know, just a, he, he's, he's doing a really good job compared to what we had before. I'm not sure, you know, we're kinda, we have problems go, you know, we'd like to do things, we don't have any money. I mean, it's something else, so you're right, Barry, but he does an excellent job for.
I think he's a great employee. I mean, absolutely.
Yeah, I think.
But I don't know if we utilize him in other areas, you know, even more so than.
I'm not gonna disagree with you there. He, you know, he's our safety guy now, and he's, he's really doing a really good job there too. I mean, he's, he's actually following all the rules and.
Following all the rules, that's a good.
Well, we worked before, though. We, we just, we, there was a lot of rules we, that we weren't following, and he's actually doing, he's, he's, so, but yeah, I don't know.
More compliance, probably, is better.
Yeah, compliance, yeah. Let's follow the rules.
Um.
The building, there's two buildings down there. Are, are they both EDA buildings?
No, one's impound.
Just the, just the Becker County extension building.
There's an impound, Becker County impound.
And that's owned outright by Becker County.
By Sheriff's Department.
Sheriff's.
Mm hmm.
Well, by the county.
By the county, they're both.
Um, then I don't know if I said this, but we went over our audit. There was no concerns. Um, as Commissioner Hanson said, we had, uh, planning commission, just an update on that. We do have a resignation from Nick Bowers on the planning commission, so we do have his position to fill, which is in Commissioner Hanson's district. Um, Barry and I had our benefits committee. There is an RFQ going out for health insurance, family insurance, and the price of it was really the hot topic of the meeting, of what can we do to really get the family insurance price down, and I'm not sure what that answer is.
What, um, what's the name of our bro, our gentleman helping us with that, the broker?
The broker?
Steve. Um, we're gonna stick with, with this, his, that same company another round. Um, we were, I, I think there was a little bit, not quite as much satisfaction in, um, their follow-up on questions for employees. When the employees had questions concerning the benefits, uh, they weren't, um, as forthcoming with any correspondence that we would have liked, so we're gonna let them know that we want better, cause that's their role, to answer these questions when, when needed. Um, so we want that relationship to be better, or if we don't, if it doesn't improve, the next time we will be putting on an RFQ for new broker, I think, or possibly looking at it on our own. But I think a broker can, can broker a better deal for you.
Yep.
Um, in the, in the, in the first part of it, so that's, I mean, they can go back and forth and answer those questions real quickly, so.
Mr. Chair, uh, just one thing, uh, thank you, Eric, for bringing that up. Um, Nick Bowers is retiring for the planning of his own, is that my responsibility to look for replacement, or is that?
Well, there's nobody knocking on the door typically to be on the planning commission.
You have to do all the work and make sure.
Well, it's advertised, so people can, can put their application into the county, but quite often it ends up to be you have to go out and twist arms and, and get someone that you think would be decent.
I remember on the Board of Adjustments, it was a challenge.
Yeah.
When, when will that appointment happen?
As soon as you get it, as soon as you can, as, for a.
We'll have to advert, yeah, well.
For a vacancy, for a vacancy, I don't think we have legally, Carrie, I don't think we have to advertise for a vacancy, uh, but I think that's, we always do.
I think we always.
Has it been posted yet?
Don't.
No.
Okay, so I got a little time.
Yeah, okay.
So it'll be, it'll be vacant till you fill it, then. I mean.
That's fine.
I mean, I'm just saying, it won't, there's no, there's no waiting time that you have to do, I don't think, on a, on a resignation, so whatever, whatever works for you.
Mr. Chair, if I may, um, I know you referenced the, um, the broker, the medical broker. I just wanted just to update, there is an internal meeting, uh, with the broker and the next up supervisor as well, to talk about our expectations and, and our concerns of communication, so.
That's good. Okay, then lastly, well, not quite lastly, but almost lastly, um, I had the, uh, Mahubi meeting. They have to put out their annual report, so I just wanted to, to talk about a couple of highlights. Um, they did purchase some land in Otter Tail County and are moving forward with, um, a tiny home community. I don't know if the board remembers, but there was originally land that they were looking to purchase in Becker County. Um, that was not well-received by the community. There were some other issues, and then I believe the, the landowner, um, ultimately finally backed out, but they have purchased land, so they will be building a tiny home community, community, which really is geared more towards veterans. So, but they, they will be, um, our Becker County veterans can utilize that service, so I think that's an exciting thing coming up, up for this region. Um, and then just some other highlights that Mahubi did, so these numbers don't, aren't specific to Becker County, but they are specific to the, the five counties that Mahubi serves. They assisted forty, forty-one families working towards a good-paying job with their SNAP employment and training program. Helped one thousand three hundred and twenty-three individuals file their taxes through their voluntary tax program. Four hundred and seven people enjoyed, um, improved energy efficiency in their homes through the energy weather, weatherization team. Uh, their Head Start programs for four hundred and eighteen pregnant women, infant toddlers, and preschoolers with quality, healthy nutrition, mental health, coaching, and educational experiences. And they provided housing assistance to one hundred and ninety-five individuals experiencing homelessness to find, uh, safe shelter. So that's Mahubi. The only other thing we had, of course, was the financial planner, which I am looking forward to his plan and input. That was all I had.
All right, who would like to go?
Um, um, benefits committee, we, um, we discussed that with already, so I had a joint powers meeting, and that's the joint powers of the, the, it's the Red River Basin Committee that we have a joint powers with. Um, that's the tour, and I think you all got an invite to go on the tour tomorrow. Um, they're gonna go down to Manson Slough, and, and it's a full-day tour of the Red Basin. It's the Red Boards Tour, and they've asked if anyone else, cause there's, they had some extra seats, so they asked extending those out to, and I thought maybe, maybe Phil might wanna, because he's interested in that, but he's busy, so, um, I probably wanted, I didn't reserve either, but I thought if you were gonna go, maybe we could go, but it sounds like you're busy. I've been to the, on this, basically the same tour already, looking at the Manson Slough, and, um, so, we, I also went to soil, had a soil and water meeting. They, I'm gonna, I'm gonna forward Carrie the report that, cause they do a real nice report, their employees give a report to their board, and, um, I'll just have, that, you can read that report from each employee, see what they're up to, but, um, obviously tree orders were one of their big items this last go-around, and I think they have a few trees left, if anyone's interested in, um, I think they have some potted trees left, so.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Nelson, I, I think we got their report. I, I saw that a month ago, or the last meeting.
But they.
Soil and water, I think I saw that.
Okay, well, they do it monthly, then, so this will be for this, for this last one, I'll forward it, and maybe you already get it, so you don't have, I don't have to resend it, but.
I think we do get it.
I think we do.
It's, uh, it's, it's real interesting to read, so I won't bother you with that. Um, and at the soil and water board meeting, Buffalo Red, um, Administrator Christine and Bennett with, with, uh, Houston Engineering came, I think it's Houston. And given, gave a little update on the project that they, that we've had some discussions on, um, the, the upper red, um, gave a little presentation. Um, I asked some questions about if that blowout of the river would have happened without this ditch, and Bennett thought he, said he could comfortably say that it would, because what happened is it's back, back eroding. But I do question if that was just a natural occurrence, cause the fall there is so great, once that cuts, it's, it's, it's going, it's, and it's so, I don't know if you're aware, the project is building some huge levees to stop that from breaking over again, and if the water did get up that high, it would break over the whole thing, not just one spot, cause it's all the same height, so they figured that would cause it so it wouldn't erode, so. Um, I'm actually, Jerry Van Amber wants to schedule a meeting with me, and then Bill Steffel is our appointment about the project, because, um, they're thinking that the project may be dead if we don't, if Becker County doesn't support it, and this time I don't think we do, or at least I don't, and, um, so they wanna try to save the project. Um, Bill Steffel did make a motion at the meeting to go, move forward with the project with it being, without being the special taxing district, um, so that, and that failed on a three-two vote, so, um, I think that's, in, in my opinion, that's a, a appropriate way to fund this one, because it's such a huge project, and it benefits the whole, not just, it has no benefit to the people that are actually being, paying for it, so, um, so we'll see where that goes.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Nelson, um, if you ever go up there, I, I would like to see that. Um, I, if we, if we, we have to make a decision.
You want, if, if you want, you're welcome to sit in at eleven o'clock on Thursday, or, did I say ten or eleven? On Thursday, we're gonna meet here. Um, Bill Steffel and, and me, and then the engineer, and then, um, Jerry, he's a board member for Buffalo Red. If you, if you're interested, Carrie, what time did I say that meeting was?
Eleven.
You said eleven.
Ten, ten AM.
It's ten.
Ten AM, yeah. So, um, Dave and I had the sheriff's committee. Um, as you know, as we looked, we decided on that, we're not looking, we, we're not interested in purchasing land at this time, and we just, we didn't discuss it, that that was, um, part of the thing and part of our, the, and we had Klein-McCarthy there talking about design of the, of the current, of the impound building. Um, we kinda went through some of those concerns or what, some of the things, and at the end of the day, we said, we have, in my opinion, is we have to wait to see where our, where the state comes in, how much our levy is to determine what.
We both agree that.
What, um, where, how fast or when we move on this. It's right now, we're in such, such big questions on how much our tax levy is gonna be, so we kinda just held off on that and said, let's wait until legislation's over, and then we can look again, and, and Scott from Klein-McCarthy was real good. He said, whatever works, um, just let him know, but the bill, if we get this architecturally designed, which we have to have, I mean, I don't know. I don't know any way around not having an architect sign off on, on the structure, on, to get this competitively bid, you know, even though we don't want it extravagant, you still have to have, be fair to, to move forward, and, and that total bill was seven, about seventy-three thousand for architectural fees. Um, but we're looking at a, um, probably about a one, one and a half, two million, three, you know, the, if initial estimate was four million for a steel or for a concrete or steel wall, so, um, so we're still thinking about that. We could get it, um, build ready for about forty-three thousand, I think, designed and ready for bid, but you can't, you don't do that until you know for sure you're gonna build it, because um, if you wait a year, you gotta go back in and check any, any new codes that come in, and it'll cost you more money, so until we're ready, until this board's ready, then we, we just kinda sit in that, that, um, holding pattern. Carrie's gonna go over STS, I assume, so I won't bring that up. Um, we got the squad cars and a deputy resignation on the agenda, so.
Yep.
Um, that, that resignation, we had a resignation, and that will not come before us, because it was all, like, the board discussed earlier, or made a motion to, it's within budget, we're not.
Yep. Yeah, the whole, the new position would be within budget.
I think, let's see, Sunnyside, I think Dave and I had Sunnyside. Um, we had the audit, very, we had a very good audit. We, you know, one question we didn't ask is where we compare with other nursing homes, our size, but I think we know we are at the top.
We're, we're one of the top ones, yeah.
Um, our, our fiscal year ends September thirtieth, I think.
Yep.
And, um, and our, we were positive in that year, and we're positive this year in the tune of, uh, over a hun, I mean, I don't have the number on me right now, but it's. Hundred and sixty thousand, about positive. one hundred and sixty thousand, about positive, so.
Yes.
I mean, we are doing well. There are concerns for the future of nursing homes, too, with the state and federal budgets. I think we mentioned this before, the possible hurt with some of this funding cuts would, would impact us, but we think we can, you know, at Sunnyside, we certainly feel strongly, we can weather the storm. And I think we can, we're still positive for the next two years, and in, in cycles like this, we, things change so fast. We're confident that we can weather this to see what happens.
Yeah.
We also have a over two million dollar reserve, which is huge. We're talking about we have some monies that we have to spend by June thirtieth, so we're making some improvements. Anything reserved, anything left, we can pay down our, our debt, which is about five hundred and eighty thousand right now.
Yep.
And we're actually thinking, maybe we just pay that off completely with two million reserve. But we might wanna keep some debt, because then there's, there's some programs that are always beneficial if you have debt.
Program.
So, that can pay off debt, so we might pay it down, but not pay it off.
Yeah.
Anything to add at Sunnyside?
Yeah, there's the, the, the things that they're doing with that money that we have to spend, they're gonna remodel one of the tub rooms. They're gonna put new carpet in the facility, and they're possibly looking at putting a courtyard, paved, paved courtyard out
For, for memory.
By the lake, for, yeah, and then they'd fence it in, so.
This is for memory care.
Memory care people.
People who can, who can actually then get outside and, and
Yeah, and they don't have to have nearly as much supervision.
They don't have to have direct supervision, they're, you know.
When they're fenced in.
Mr. Chair.
I don't like fenced.
I know.
I was searching for a better word than fenced in.
How many, how many residents does Sunnyside serve, service?
We have twenty-eight.
Well, I think we're currently at about twenty-eight, I think max is thirty.
Twenty-eight residents.
Yep.
It, it used to be all double rooms in, in the facility, and, and in our, our world now, there, double rooms aren't.
Yeah, very rarely, like you've seen nursing homes.
Yeah, they don't, they don't, you don't
We have one double room?
We have one double room, and that's for the purpose of having built, so we can build more for a single room.
Yeah.
Because if you don't have a double room
And I don't think, I don't think that
You can't have different rates if you don't have a double room.
Yeah.
And of course, we're never at full capacity, because the double room's never full.
Yeah, and then one, one other thing about Sunnyside is, we paid, we were paying a nurse consulting fee, and it actually is increasing our revenue. I think the one month we paid eight thousand dollars for the consulting fee, and it increased our revenue by sixty-eight thousand, so.
Well, and this consulting fee is properly coding.
Properly coding stuff, yes.
And we did that at Lakeland Mental Health, too. You increase your revenue if you maximize your coding, and, and how the state wants things coded, how it's, it's a you do the job, you just have to figure out how to code it properly.
So that was kinda interesting.
And they said that will go down as
Oh, yeah, yeah, as you
Employees learn how to code better.
Code better, that'll go down, yeah. Do you have any?
Nope, that's it, except for the thing I forgot I was gonna say.
Well, that's good.
Which I can't remember.
That's okay. Richard?
I had EDA with Erica, and I just wanna say, she covered almost everything, but, you know, as far as our new EDA guy, we, we are actually looking at economic development now, which we
Yes.
Never did before, and it's a, there's, it's a learning process, but we're, he's actually geared that way and thinking about it. And so there, there is, now, there's not been a big difference yet, we haven't done anything yet, but he's looking at ways of promoting business, and he's learning, he's, and he's really, it's, it's in, it's part, it's part of our, our committee now, where before, we were just housing. We never talked about anything but housing, and so that, that, we are advancing very, not, I don't have anything to show you on paper, but.
Well, you know, I, I think promoting our areas is part of EDA, obviously, business promotion and, and but, I mean, I don't think that's, I, I don't, that's an awful big payroll for, you know.
Right, yeah, and, and we've got him doing other things, too. I think he's pretty busy, isn't he?
He's pretty busy.
He's pretty busy, so, you know, I
But I don't think it's, I don't think a lot of it is specifically, I mean, if you wanna expand your word for EDA, I think it's, it's, we've expanded it quite a bit for him to be paid solely out of EDA. I think, I think he should at some point be looked at his job roles. If it's not EDA, that should come from the general fund rather than ED. I mean, I think proper payment where, where that, because we, I know I think we rely on him for things outside EDA a lot.
We do.
And that's, but, you know, is that EDA related, or is it not EDA?
And he's always ready to help. I've asked him to do different things, you know, or
Is it digging holes for, for you?
I'd like to have him there, because he looks pretty, he's a lot better shape than I.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Nelson, what, EDA, isn't, isn't it EDA and HRA, the housing, they're both combined? So you're saying EDA hasn't really
No, it used, well, it used to be Parks and Rec, or he used to be part of other, he used to be paid half of Parks and Rec, and then they do a lot of those, you know, grants, and our forestry can't handle all the grants and the, I mean, and that's part of EDA for some of these grant writing, and instead of hiring I mean, and have your forester doing, going to all these meetings, I think, I think we're having EDA do that, or, you know, because it's a lot of meeting time for the Heartland Trail, that's not, it's not really NRM position, so.
Is EDA trails?
Well
It's economic development.
Part of tourism, yeah.
That's how you, that's how you stretch it into EDA.
It would be.
Because honestly, in my opinion, ED, you know, if you're trying to get business, I mean, the only businesses that I think I mean, I don't like EDA helping business that are gonna compete against businesses that are already here. I mean, I don't think that's the role. I think if you're if you're a gas station, wants to come in and compete against all the other gas stations, I don't think, I don't think there's a role for economic development, because it's, you're hurting somebody else. I mean, it's, it's businesses that aren't already here or affecting us negatively for businesses. That's, that's how I see
Well, cut, healthy competition's good for us, too, though. You know, I mean, that does make, you know
I, I don't believe the government should be involved in healthy competition. As far as, well, let's get another gas station here, so we can get lower ga, I don't think that's our role. I, I think that would be, that would be
I don't think we need any more gas stations.
That, as an example.
Yeah, you can't be
Yeah, and I'm not sure that, you know, but certainly
But that's, that, though, if, if someone's, if there's a product that's out there being charged, overcharged, someone's gonna come in and, and do that. They don't need, they don't need government's help to see that, I don't think.
I don't know how you pick and choose which one you can support. I, I support new business and business growth in our community, and so I don't know how you
But I do, but I do think as far as our current EDA, you know, we have been, as Richard said, really focused so much on housing and our housing contract, and our meetings have been consumed by just housing, and, and we really are trying to put that in our, the management job, or management's role, that's what they should be doing, and the Housing Subcommittee kind of help facilitate some of that, so that at our EDA meetings, we can talk about economic development, and I think we're, we're going down that path, but as, as Richard said, we don't have, you know, the money right now to
We don't have any money.
Figure out what to do, but, but that, I, I think we have some really good ideas
Are you
Being sparked.
You, you mentioned, you mentioned the EDA, the extension building, or that EDA, are you looking at renting out the backspace then? I, I think I mean, I, I think it should, I mean, it's vacant, and I don't think having two meetings a month in there is serving us well, so if we're not gonna
Yeah, that's what he, he
His idea to
Yep.
To try and start for somebody to maybe could start a, a business there, get something started, and we can maybe help somebody that way, so.
Well
And it's been empty since I've been here, and he's the first guy to come up with that. Now, I don't know if that plan
The workshop was in there, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think Cody can explain it best, what, kind of what his thoughts are, so.
Yeah, I would say that'd be a good idea to have
Well, I think, I think it's a space where, I mean, I don't know that we have, we should be selling it right now, but down, at some point, maybe we look at that when we but certainly that space, we need to, if we can generate income, that's our goal, and if we can rent that out for short term.
Do you have any, anything else?
Uh, well, I was just gonna talk about STS, but you're talking about STS?
Maybe we can chime in now, or later?
No, you're better at it than me, so you go ahead and do it. That's all I got.
Okay, so I, I had a courthouse, actually, Richard and I had courthouse, Richard sat in for Barry. The, there's a couple of things that are on the agenda, but we did talk about our UK, UKG system, and we've had a lot of I don't know what the word is.
Problem.
Agonizing painful problems. And anyway, so what we came up with is a plan to, we, if we're going to not have UKG, it expires on December thirty-first. So we have, and you have to give a ninety-day notice, so we have till the end of September, so we're gonna have payroll, the auditor's office. Judy offered to help with the technology, and, and the, and the human resources office to work together to try to figure out how they can make it work better. Given, and I, our biggest thing was to give it an honest effort, a goal, and see if we can, what, what they can come up with. And then if it still doesn't suit our purposes by then, then we can possibly switch to a different company.
Mr. Chair, what is UKG?
UKG does our
Payroll.
Payroll, mainly our payroll.
So it's software?
Yeah.
Software support is what we're lacking, though.
Yeah, the support.
Them supporting their software to, to be specific to our needs.
Yeah, and that's what they're gonna try to work on, to see if they are able, because there were some possibilities that there could happen. Where's it gonna discover, did you have? What, yeah.
I was just gonna say, yeah, it's for your purposes, it's all-inclusive payroll software, human resources, so from hire to retire, all the way through information.
That's probably a better answer.
Full package.
Yep.
So did you discuss the costs of this?
Yes. The cost, so the, there was, there, we, we had a bid, we had a bid out, right? Or RFQ, or, so that was, it was, it was, the bid was lower, but the, the services that we're not using for UKG right now that we're paying for, it would probably balance out if we actually, if we use those services, but we things were not working well, so we didn't onboard those services, because we didn't want them, the same thing to happen that happened to the other stuff, that kinda, am I kinda saying that in a layman's way? Okay, so, so if we do, are able to use those services, it actually, we should actually be about the same, roughly.
That's same with
With, with, with the new, with the, the new bid we have, we got, because we are, we are, we are paying for extra services from other places, because they're not, we're not using them in UKG. But we can use them in UKG if we can figure out how to use the system, make it work for us.
If they support it better.
Yeah, yeah.
So if, if in nine, if at the end, within ninety days, the end of the year, so, and, and say we switch, where's, where's the is it kinda cash neutral?
Yes.
Yes, yes it is.
So it's not gonna be like we'll be paying more, we'll be paying a different company
Yeah.
Monthly fees that would be similar to what we're currently paying.
Yes, and the UKG fees were being taken out of special general, so it's a cost that we're gonna have to budget.
We're, we're currently not budgeted for. All right, so I had one thing on transit. We, just, so our local contribution's going up to ten percent for the, for next year, and, and Kevin had explained that pre-COVID, we were at fifteen percent local share. They dropped it down to five, and now, so he's pretty sure at the net following year, probably go back up to fifteen percent again, but our riderships will cover that, our ridership fees will cover that cost of the, of the, of the less funding by the state and federal government, so we're not, we're not too concerned about that increase.
Where's our ridership fee per ride compared to other counties?
Um, we are, he's, we, we asked him that question, we're kinda right in the middle, I'd say, uh, most and, and some of the counties that have, a couple of the counties that raised their fees didn't have an issue, but there were a couple that did. Their riderships went down. It may not be attributed to that, but they, they don't know for sure, but he was, the ridership, so the, the issue with the ridership fees, we can, we can raise them, and, and, and our ridership is relatively cheap right now. But the problem is, is if you, if you increase your reserve too much, there's a possibility that the federal government will decrease the funding, and so that they'll expect you to use more of that reserve for funding. So that's, you gotta have the balance. Now, there's also some question, question, like Kevin said, that they don't officially allow you to spend money, that the reserve money for buses, but they have recently allowed you to do that. So he's gonna try to get concrete confirmation that we can spend that money on, like, our, our share of the buses, we, the new buses that we purchase. They have allowed it, but they haven't allowed it, like, officially. Does that, does that make sense? He has a, he has a letter that says, yes, you can do it.
Mayor, we just, it just, I saw the transit budget just dropped, but did we just pay for that bus?
Mm-hmm.
I saw it.
Yep, yeah, so.
I saw that was a big drop.
And I think that's all I had, I don't have anything else, so. Anybody else have any other reports, reports?
I don't think we're two minutes early on our
I know, so, any appointments?
Oh, Phil, thank you.
I think Phil talked at least, actually. Do we have any appointments? All right, so let's move on to our county administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of things to report on, just as a reminder, I know we talked about this earlier. The AMC District Meeting is this Friday night in Fergus Falls. I'm not sure who is planning on attending. One, two?
I probably will. I was, I was contemplating it, because the legislative session's not complete yet, but maybe I wanna go and
Right, and the agenda came out, I, I assume all of you probably got the agenda?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
And Jenny Mojos is running for second vice president?
Yep, she is.
I don't think anyone's running against her.
Uh, there was one person that filed in December of last year that's running against her.
Oh, really? I did.
I don't know who, unless that person dropped all of it. I, I can't remember who it was, though.
I did get, at the end of last week, from Ryan, who was here on our work session, with regards to our financial planning. He put together a document, and I can certainly share that with you if you're interested, but he just compiled the survey information and all the information from all of you, as well as the department heads, and talked about next steps, and where he saw some of our strengths in our budgeting process, as well as some areas to focus on. I, it's a three-page document, so I'm not gonna read it to you, but I can certainly send it to you if you'd like. So he and I are working on, on next steps in that process. And so I did have a department head meeting yesterday, and so we did, I did share this with the department heads, and we talked about this, and overall, I think they saw the experience as, as positive and helpful. And the one, one thing that did come out of the department head, which I fully agree with, is, you know, messaging to, as we are awaiting state, you know, budget information, and, and where this county is, and how to proceed with budgets. What kind of messaging we should be doing, you know, with all of our employees, because, you know, what I don't want to do is have them hearing information here and not have heard it before, so I am taking information from the department heads and trying to come up with some kind of a messaging plan out to our employees, whether that's an email or what have you, but I think yeah, so it doesn't cause chaos. So that came from that. Let's see, what else I got on my list? The next thing is the STS, which you guys have all referenced. We've talked about the STS program in the Sheriff's Committee, as well as in NRM. We did get notice that, and again, it gets, it's quite confusing when one talks about it, and I know we talked about it somewhere in finance yesterday as well. So we have ICWIC, who are the state prisoners that are in prison that come here and are housed to do work. And there's a crew leader for that. We also have a state STS crew leader, and then we have our county STS crew leader, so we've got three different people. So what we know is the state has sent notice that the state STS crew leader position has been cut.
The funding, the funding, not the position.
Yes, the, the person has been given a term notice, they're no longer here, and the funding, yes. So that position, so pretty much was focused within the NRM, environmental, out at the MRF, and also out half and half of their time doing trails and, and those types of things, twenty percent. So that position is twenty hours. Did I say twenty percent? I did, I said that, too. Twenty hours, split time, so, so that position is no longer here. So NRM talked about that yesterday in finance as well, so really what they're gonna have to be looking at is how are they going to cover hours out at the MRF, because they have some potential, they have the ICWIC crew leader there, but there's no backup for that. They do have some staff that are trained to oversee that, so again, really the direction was, is that through NRM, just to really look
You're talking environmental, not NRM.
Oh, goddamn, sorry. I'm saying twenty percent, too. Twenty hours.
Because I'm like, did I miss a meeting?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Did I miss my meeting?
You were at the wrong meeting. Sorry, yes, environmental. So really, what Steve is gonna be looking at is what are the options? So really what Steve is gonna be looking at is what are the options on how to look at covering those types of things.
And then one thing that Steve also mentioned was, um, how much will the state allow a county employee to supervise the ICWIC crew? How much time?
I think, I think Shane brought that up, that we should probably try to keep the STS program alive and then pay for that, so I mean, because then you will be allowed to have STS. I mean, we have to still label STS, even if it's county paid, to get those, those inmates that qualify for it. And there's not a lot, I think at that time, there was one that qualified, I mean, so, but.
For the county.
Yeah.
Yep, so for the county position, um, the portion that we were getting for payment for that position allocated was 26,000 grand from the state, which is no longer, we've got notice that that's no longer gonna be there. So that funds our, our county STS program. And yes, there were discussion about what we wanna do with that, and you're absolutely right, there's not a lot of individuals in the jail that qualify for the program. I think Steve, and he can certainly speak to this, had gotten some information late yesterday, you know, because the question really has come up. He has some staff within the MRF that can potentially supervise inmates, and, and if that's allowable, and I think the answer was yes, correct? Okay, so I don't know.
Through STS, not ICWIC?
No, ICWIC.
Yes, okay.
So there was some, some discussion about our state STS, and whether or not that could back up our ICWIC, and so there's just a lot of ruling parts, so I, I'm not necessar, I don't know that we have any real solutions on the table, but there's been a lot of discussion about these programs.
Yep, Steve.
I was just, before I came down, I was talking to you, Steve, about that? And um, I think we're gonna try to, um, therein, they're still waiting to get through their budgeting, there's still a lot of confusion as far as what they're gonna allow or not allow. But we might try to reach out to them, see if we can get some sort of MOU, or something, agreement that will allow STS, STS, or get some, somebody that works for the county, trained with whatever their specs are, to, to, or equals crew.
For the backup?
Mr. Chair, Steve, come up. Is the DOC, I mean, could they use, could we use DOC people? Those are different than state STS inmates, right? Those are different people, but could we use them to get their hours, is that what you're exploring?
Well, there's two issues you're talking about, one is.
The, the ICWIC crew are all state inmates, and they can do different things. The STS program are county inmates, they're generally short-term, they might be a week or two, or whatever it might be, that they might be with a STS, or a STS supervisor, and they can do different things as well. What we need is for that ICWIC crew, we need a supervisor that can take them out and do different things. Those two programs don't mix, you don't mix state and county inmates together at the same time. Now, in some counties, they use ICWIC, just ICWIC, and they might go out and do parks and rec, they might, because they don't, we use ours at our recycling facility for the most part. But that'd be something we could explore, that would be a, a bigger conversation on what we wanna do with that, or how many inmates we could get. That's, that's a whole different thing.
I, I'm saying, are the Department of Corrections, that Rubenstein came in here, I mean, are those the same batch of?
That, that's a different.
That's completely different.
Those are ones that are released from jail under supervision, but they're.
Well, is that a possibility?
So Rubenstein oversaw that, and he oversaw the state STS program. That, that's.
Which is no longer.
That, which is no longer here. So those, the STS and ICWIC are parallel programs within the Department of Corrections. But their focus is different.
So I think you're referencing the new program that they have up and running for early release for those that, rather than have them housed in jail, that they're under supervision, so that's some conversation, but they're, that I've started with, with Rubenstein, and basically, you know, it's never been done before, so it would be really thinking outside the box to try to utilize some of those individuals that are on pre-supervision to do some of this work, but I don't know.
We're exploring, though.
We have two employees then, that are, the funding is, the partial funding is not moving forward, is that correct?
There's two employees that are impacted by this, so both the county and the state STS.
And each, each employee, I think what Brian said was about 20,000 annually?
Probably more than 25.
25, it's, I think.
But the one employee was not a county employee, right?
That's correct, it was a state contracted position.
One state.
So the state contracted person is just gonna drop?
He's gone, he's done.
I thought we paid for them, I thought the county supplemented that 75%.
We, the, the contract that we had with them was bought down by 25%. So we were paying like $77,000 a year for that one contracted position. But that position is, is gone, that contract is gone. That's, that's the state ICWIC, or state STS program position. That's the one that works 20 hours at a recycling facility, and he was working with parks and rec.
So we had county dollars invested in that person.
Seventy.
Seventy-seven.
But we, so we still have.
Seventy-seven thousand.
That's in budget.
Yep.
So we could take that funding and make, make our other one, which was 75% county funded already, also?
So we've lost the 26,000 from the state, on the county.
So if we increase that employee up to full-time, up to 100%, from 75 county payroll to 100% county payroll, we're still within budget?
Yes.
Yes.
And we need somehow to find another way to supervise some of your individuals, is that correct?
If, that's true, if the state will allow that, which I, I think there was something will work, and work out in the next couple of weeks.
So for now, we want to, we're looking to continue the one county, the one employee as a, move to a full-time employee, is that what we're looking for? At least till the, you know, until the end of the year? I think that.
I think that's one of the things, yeah.
That's critical that we have that, in the past, we've actually hired assistants in the summertime.
So we wanna cover, we wanna cover the 26,000 for the county STS that the state is not covering, that's, that's what you're saying?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's the first question, yes.
That's the first.
I, I, do we, do we, do we wanna do that now?
Well, I, yeah, I think there's a lot to this, but I think that, I think we need to address that today.
Yeah.
I think we have, the money's in that budget, I mean, we still have, it just slides over from the other one that we're not funding, right?
No, you, no, because the state.
Well, once, it won't, my terminology is, it's not sliding over, this position's gone for the rest of the year, so there's a cost savings of half a year of a, of 75% employee from the ICWIC.
From the state contract.
Right, so that, so that county support is no longer gonna be paid for that position.
That's correct. Those are funded through environmental and NRM.
So, so technically, we have.
Well, I hear the argument.
Yeah, we have half of 75%, both of those are budgeted.
So the argument is you don't wanna pay for that out of your budget? You wanna pay for, someone else can pay for that out of their budget.
We definitely need that labor to work in those, those different capacities that they were doing, that person that's gone. Somehow I gotta backfill that labor requirement, which is obvious.
Steve's protecting his money and his.
He's always protecting his money. It's like this.
So, so do we want to, does anybody wanna make a motion to pay the $26,000?
Not 26,000, it'd be half that, because we're half the year.
Have we got, have we got all, I mean?
That I don't know.
You're not, you're not paying 26,000?
To, to pick up the remainder of what the state covered for a county STS person, would you rate it that way?
Yes, and how would we, where would we pull that money from? I mean, I think you need to identify where you're bringing that money from. Reserves, I mean, you can save reserves if you want, or you can save for, if there's any in the opioid, or if there's any in the the white earth.
Aren't those designated funds, though?
No. Not, not white earth, opioid funds are designated for something, but.
The white earth fund?
The white earth would be.
That's about down to $19.
$19, yeah.
$19, huh?
Well, it will be.
Well, get that clear out easy. There is general, is there any general? You know, and that's what's confusing, because you look at our, our monthly statements, and there's $890,000 left in our general revenue. And how much we have committed left there, you know, the, is the bear cat out of that?
Yeah, it's allocated.
I mean, I think, well, allocated, or is it, is it paid? I mean, those are the, I mean, I think we need to be a little bit more informed on where we are in those funds, because you look at that, and I'm like, we've got money here and money there, and, and I know some of it's allocated, but it's been a, been a couple of months, or should probably see what's. Just, just keep us abreast on what's, what those are, but I think it'll, it'll be about 12, $13,000.
Should be 13.
I think we need to do that, and if we need to spend it out of reserves this year, till we figure out the funding of it, and.
It, it should be 13 if the state pays it.
I, I think that's part of the issue, is we're not sure what the state is paying.
I don't know what they're gonna pay for, to the county STS program, like you said, if it's been half a year, will they pay half of that? But that.
Well, let's guarantee it at least through Labor Day, or through the first October, I mean, just so we, and then we'll have a better understanding of our long-term.
Hopefully, we have a finalized budget by then.
Yes.
October.
But that gets us through the summer, we, we need to have that person full-time through the summer. And then we can review, and most likely through the, I mean, through the end of the year and continuing, but.
So continuing as is, as the STS.
Till the.
Fully, fully fund that position till the end, you want the end of the year?
End of the year.
I think till the end of the year.
So do we have a motion to fully fund the STS county position till the end of the year using reserve funding?
Still moved.
So we have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
So a motion by Erica and a second by Barry?
To make up for, just put, include there to make up the state short funding shortfall, or elimination of state funding.
Is that good with you, Eric?
In response to this elimination of state funding.
Okay, so do we have a motion and a second, do we have any discussion?
Mr. Chair, what will the dollar amount be for that funding to get us to the end of the year?
It should be 13,000, but it could be up to 26, if the state doesn't supplement the first half of the year.
Carrie?
Yes.
What'd you say?
I said, depending on if we've received any of the funding at this, and I don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
26, the total would be 26,000 at the worst-case scenario.
Up to 26,000.
Well, they.
And then we're gonna have to revisit this topic again, then, at the end of the year, correct?
We're gonna have to probably.
It's gonna be, we're probably gonna revisit it a few times.
We're gonna have to revisit it pretty soon because of the situation.
I just have to say, I mean, I'll, I'll go along with this for now, but I'm very confused as to STS, ICWIC, county, state, funding, NRM, so um, we, we need to keep this on the front burner, so we can understand it before the end of the year, whenever things become clear, I guess.
And we may have to do some changing.
Yeah, we might.
On how it all works to, to make this work out, but I agree that we, we need to, we need to do this now, so we can keep, keep everything going here through the summer, but.
And this is a position that we just got, we just started getting reimbursed from the state DNR for about 19,000.
19,000, correct.
Because they're, we're maintaining their accesses.
Yep, so we do have 19,000 from the DNR.
But, but that's already in our budget.
It's already in it.
It is.
So, so we have a motion and a second, do we have any more discussion? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, alright, motion carries.
Alright, Mr. Chair, so the next item.
Thanks, Steve.
Thanks, Steve.
Um, that was actually, didn't make it into the packet, but it was sent out via email, and this was just for information. I was just trying to get enough information to answer the question whether or not our old jail space could be remodeled, and whether or not it could also include a third floor. So that information, and again, I'm not looking for any actions, this is just for information, what the potential costs, you know, would be if we were to look at utilizing that space, I don't, well, I don't think, I know, we haven't made any final decisions about who, what, where, any of those types of things, but I thought this was good information, I did piggyback with the, the gentleman that was here, working with Steve in environmental, so I took, took the opportunity to have him walk through this while he was on site, so this is again, just for your information. Any questions?
No.
Okay. Um, the next item that I have is budget, as you all know, there hasn't been a lot of, again, additional information from the state of where the state budgets are, as of yesterday, I had heard, and Denise had confirmed, she also heard that, again, one of the things at the state level, we've, we've talked extensively about cost shifts for human services, and potential impacts to the county that that may have, and now there's been some discussion again about revamping that again. So again, it's really kind of anybody's guess at that. And I know I'd been asked by a few of you as far as what we're anticipating for payroll costs for 26, so I did work with Mary, and we've got some very rough numbers of what our total payroll potentially is for 26. Um, if you all recall, we have in contracts, 3.5% COLA. A majority of our staff are in the step systems within the grids, which is equates to about 3% as they move each year, so that's looked at, and again, our health insurance, potentially, we may be going out for an RFP for that, we don't know. However, again, just best estimate, increase in insurance and adding that all up, we're probably potentially looking at a payroll of 35 and a half million dollars next year. With that, the thing that we do not have the final figures on, it's still being worked on, is our, our payroll, our position allocation. What that tells us is within human services in those payroll positions about how much of those positions is actually reimbursed versus levy dollars, and so we, we don't have that to compare.
And that, that's about a $2 million increase from last year, right? That's what we just discussed yesterday?
Roughly. And I, I would like to say I think it's high, that's, that's my hope, but again, it's just very rough, you just kinda wanted an idea of where we might fall. Any other questions?
So, yeah, so did I hear you say right, so our payroll with grant funding and what the levy pays is 35?
That's the total.
That's the total.
The next item is, and we've talked about this in the past, and we did, we, I think, at least once, if not twice, is the direction of, of all, of all of you, of what you would like to, how you'd like to proceed or not with a rental space for the Sheriff's Department and all of their equipment. After we discussed this initially, then I was notified that they did, it is for a response to an RFP for bid on the rental space that the Sheriff's Office was interested in, I believe that's due tomorrow. Um, I can certainly respond to that, but I do need some direction from you as far as price of what we would offer, if that's the direction we want to go.
You know, how, how much is it worth?
Well, you're supposed to respond and tell them how much you want, your.
How much were, how much were we thinking, did we have a idea?
2,700.
2,700.
Here's what I'm wondering, because this is an indefinite thing, we don't know how long. We, we could build something, somewhere, maybe not, maybe not what, but, you know, and, and reuse it for something else, so whether it's sell, sell it or something, but for $2,700 a month, if it's gonna be a couple of years, or I don't know how long it's gonna be before we get them the space they need, I do wanna get all this equipment in one spot, in case. I don't wanna see somebody lose a life over somebody not being able to find something. But I don't know why we wouldn't, that's a big monthly payment if we could be built, if we could build something and pay a payment on something. And there's different ways to do it, I could, I could envision some garage doors like, like these storage units are.
Is there room out at environmental?
There's, there is room out there, there's, is there room in this? I was over at that impound lot the other day, and that other building, the.
I, I can't answer that, Shane would have.
Well, I looked, I looked, there's, there's room behind both those buildings, there's a bunch of cars and stuff in there.
Oh, over by extension?
Yeah.
Impound building?
Yeah, because that's the impound lot right now, isn't it?
Yes.
You know, I don't know why, I don't know what the deal is with those cars, but, I mean, we have room there to build some, I don't wanna just rent something for, it depends on how many, how long we're gonna do it. Do we have any idea how long we'd be renting this? I'm looking at you and Dan.
I would, I would say, I would say that if you're, if. I would, I would say, I would say that if you're, if, if this board is still on board with moving forward with the impound building, I would say we would piggyback on the timing of the finishing bond payment of the courthouse, I mean, I think that's the key, I don't think we want to see an increase in bond payment when we're in such difficulty.
Absolutely not.
And when is that?
February of twenty-seven.
But there's also, we also could, could postpone that bond to start till, you know, after the other one's done.
Yes, you don't have to wait till the very end, you can time it so your payments start, or maybe just an interest-only payment if you do it in, if we build the building in twenty-six, the payments would, then you would start payments in twenty-seven, so I would assume a year from now, you would, ideally, I would think a year from now, you would have.
Have the impound building built.
You would have start of construction.
Or maybe at least start of construction.
And it would probably take, I would say this building will only take two, three months, maybe six months to build, I mean, it's not a.
I think the, the max, I think, the way I, when I looked at it, I think the maximum we would rent it for would be eighteen months.
I don't, I don't think there's any, I don't think there's any.
Twelve months.
Way we're going to build another building for temporary storage of the products, we need to build a building, I, I, there's no sense in that.
With having some other.
I mean, you're going to, a building this size will cost, even if you just put a shell up with gravel floors, it's going to cost you six, seven hundred thousand.
Okay, and so this is what I'm curi, and I don't know, and I probably should have went and found this out, is we're just storing the emergency equipment, right? Is that what, that's what we're talking about here?
You're asking what they ask.
Shane, you want to answer that?
You're talking.
Because I, I can't picture a six hundred thou, I don't know what emergency equipment we have that, you know.
Well, are you talking about storage or are you talking about the impound building?
I'm not talking about the impound building, I'm talking about getting them what.
Do we have the list?
Getting all their stuff in, in one spot.
You're talking the airboat, the other boats, the Bearcat, some spare squads, your, your ATVs, your Ranger, your, you know.
Yeah, and so like the spare squads and some of that stuff, I don't see that.
I said we can, they can be parked outside, I mean, you can.
Well, I don't see that they have to be, even, I'm talking about the emergency stuff, okay, I need this airboat, or I need whatever, whatever the jaws of life.
You probably don't have the jaws of life, whatever, those things, those are the ones that concern me, that they're not all in one spot, and I can't imagine that we have so many of them that we, that we would have to spend that kind of money on, because I'm not talking about anything else, Shane. Yep.
I, I just want to solve this problem for right now, if we can, may, maybe, maybe it doesn't make any sense, Barry, I don't know.
What's this rental space, what's the size of the rental space?
Shane, do you have the rental?
I don't, I don't have those specs, I'm sorry.
Bring them in either.
I just looked at it yesterday.
The, the rental space would still not put everything in one building, we'd still have, you know, a couple of buildings that our equipment would be in, and ultimately, we're looking for is that one-stop shop that, you know, we don't want confusion when, you know, the pager tones goes off and there's a, you know, snowmobile crash up on a trailer, an ATV crash or drowning, we go to the wrong building, then we have to drive across town to get to the other building to get our stuff, you know, we want everything in one spot, that's kind of our one-stop shop, you know, I think you touched on most of the big items, you know, the command post, the Bearcat, the, we're, we're getting the airboat back, we've had that with Detroit Lakes Fire Department, but unfortunately, they're getting a piece of equipment, they've outgrown their space, so they said, we don't have space for airboat anymore, it was a great, they did a great job with it and we loved them having it because of their quick response, but yes, getting a lot of that stuff inside.
So you're talking the air, the command center, you're talking the trailer center, the trailer command center, so you have two items there, you have the airboat.
Bearcat.
Bearcat.
Bearcat and, and two or three.
Snowmobiles.
And snowmobiles and ATVs and UTVs.
Yep.
And then the, the trail, the, the, the emergency vehicle that goes on the.
Our rescue sled?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And there's, sorry, so the building served two functions, one was the Sheriff's Office
equipment, you know, our emergency response equipment, the other side of that was going to be, so the jail, our transport vehicles out at the jail frequently have dead batteries, they sit outside, there's nowhere to plug those in, so it's to get those indoors as well as, you know, that, we don't have to wait for them to warm up to transport inmates, things like that, some of that equipment just does need to be inside and temperate for usage, you know, the other thing is, we're, we're constantly fighting dead batteries and, you know, having placed, even on our spare cars, we fight that issue of having dead batteries, that they're, you know, ready to go, you know, if somebody crashes, it, you know, we don't have to bring it to a shop, get a battery replaced, things like that, we want, we need that equipment ready to go, and that's, so that's some of that needs for us, you know, I know that's the decision you guys have to make, but that's, that's the reason for a lot of that, the, so there was kind of two sides to that building, the emergency response side, the jail equipment, obviously, we're talking about STS, they've got, you know, a lot of running lawnmowers, things like that.
The new impound building, and Shane explained that very well to us, the reason you have the wall separating and, and if we could rent a couple boat slips to our boat areas for DNR is because it's secure and very, and not as secure, so we have, STS can go into the non-secure grab equipment and do something where in the impound area, it's much more, you have to track everyone who goes in that building, if there's any evidence in there at all, so that's why there's two separate.
But that's for the impound.
That's for the.
This isn't for the storage space.
Correct, right.
But, so what I'm looking at is because we, we're in a budget situation here, okay, we, that command center, you know, we're not going to lose that, we can put that somewhere and everybody should be able to know where that's at, you know what I mean?
There is, but we, we just did our drone trading and had dead batteries of that again.
Yeah, and so I was telling you.
Couldn't remove it from we fast property, had to get it jumped and, so I mean, those are, those are the things that we want to.
Shane, we talked about that, that's a disconnect switch, okay, with that.
We have a disconnect on that.
Well, then there's, then it needs to go to a mechanic, because I have disconnects on mine, and when I want to use it, whatever it is, I walk up and flip it and it starts, so there's another issue, keeping it inside won't change that.
One, one thing on batteries, you want to, I mean, batteries should have a, should be plugged in and have a maintainer on them if it's not being used, and the reason is, and I, I just found this out, but a maintainer, a good maintainer will draw down the battery and then charge a backup.
And, and you could put, you could put an electrical post next to it if you really want a maintainer, I don't, I, I was just telling them, some of my batteries are very old in my equipment.
They're better than the new ones.
All I have is a disconnect switch and it works very well, and so that's like some of these things that, we're not going to lose that, I'm worried about the things that you need in a hurry, and I'm not, not talking lawnmowers and STS or, I'm talking where, where, where are all these emergency things that we're going to run to and get, just because we're in a, a really tough financial place to.
Mr. Chair.
Yep.
Just to bring this back home, so I think we all agree that we want all of these accessory vehicles in one area, the Sheriff's Department, you, you would like them out by the jail because there's a little plot of land south of the jail to build.
Yes.
That's where you would think would be the best place to build, that costs money, so, I mean, that's what we're talking about, are we going to rent until we figure that out?
Or, or we could just have us, we could put a small building out there, not everything you want, but we could put a little building out there by the jail with some garage doors so that we, we don't end up losing it in the end, and your emergency stuff, the stuff that you want to grab, that you don't want to be confusion, I get this, it's not over here, it's not over there, that stuff, we could put something in a building there and not spend six hundred thousand dollars for those things, now, I'm not saying about getting all your other stuff inside right now either, but I'm just looking at if we're going to, if we're going to rent something for two years that, you know, and.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Verber, one thing that had been discussed, I don't know where that is at now, but the HHW building out at.
Yeah.
The old hazardous, I mean, that one houses everything, but if you're distinguishing between vehicles that need a maintainer or whatever on them to start quickly or inside, that is still on the table as far as I'm concerned.
It is, but we're, we're using that, right, no, ain't we, Steve, or not?
We're still using it.
We're still using it, and it would, it would, I'm just trying to figure out what we can do short-term, Shane, that something, maybe we can use long-term and handle some of your needs.
Yeah.
For, with the, on the emergency side.
And we get, we get that budgetarily right now, you've got a lot of decisions to make, you know, my only, we'd like to at least get it down to two locations, you know, something that houses both locations, I don't know if building a, a, a building at the jail is a smart move because, you know, ultimately, that space, I think we have those needs to do that at some point, and you're spending the money twice then, you know, and, and I don't think you can pick up the building and move it, you know, I think that based off of that footprint, you know, the availability of, of land there, because part of this is the storage building for our equipment, and then ultimately, we want to get our impound lot there, so like all those cars that you were talking about behind the building at our current location, you know, a lot of those are fatal crashes or crashes that, you know, serious injuries that, you know, there's criminal cases pending on them, DWI forfeitures, you know, basically, they're, they're related to, you know, crimes that we've had, so we store those until those cases are done before we release them, so that's why we need also that impound lot with it, so I don't know that we'd be able to build a building behind there because we'd lose our impound lot then to store those vehicles, so then we'd be looking for space needs for that to fence that in, you know, do something similar, so, you know, ultimately, I think the goal is to get that all in one place, that roadmap, I think is where, you know.
I think.
Being here today is the question.
Yeah, I think we're at a, the interim time is.
Yes.
How can you, how can we make do till this happens, and, and, I mean, the watershed, I don't know if they bought the building out, a storage building or renting one, but I think you look at all the options and I think, I think you, you capture all the, I mean, you're not going to have it all in one spot unless you rent something, unless, or you could build, but I won't support building a shed just to temporarily house for, for a year and a, year and a half, I mean, I think that's, unless you build it on a private piece of ground and resell it, I mean, that, but again, I don't know that that's, that's, I think, you know, working, maybe highway has room for kick, kicks, I hate to put Jim out there, out on the limb, but maybe there's some room for a, a couple chunks there and, and transit.
Expansion highway is all, storage building, we just, oh, one, the cold storage building, temporarily used for three years, that way out, a lot. Our funding will come from state aid, which is, we plan to build some of these outships at thirty-eight dollars, too, certain more, I think, that's, sales tax money, you know, these buildings live and stuff like that, but I know we don't need cold storage right now, but we do still have equipment set out and that, if we build something temporary on our vacant lot, I don't know the size, I think we need to keep something, but that's pretty central and then we repurpose the highway after they use it.
Is, is that south of the County Hallway Building?
No, it's, it's up in the yard.
Yeah, it's the west, right west.
Just, just west of it.
Gotcha.
It's not a, wouldn't be a huge building. Like, you're, you're. I don't know the dimensions of the lot, but.
Um.
No, like I say, I agree, if you're paying twenty-seven hundred dollars a month.
And that's, it just concerns.
Not yet.
That it would go on more.
I was saying, we're going to use your current building, I wasn't going to support either.
You know, we should engage Sheriff Glander on this, he's away at training this week, so, but, you know, some of our, that'll fulfill some functions, you know, number one, we'd need power, you know, would be a bareboat's minimum, it's better than leaving our equipment outside, which we have done in the past, you know, but again, our concern is that, you know, and I know it, it's, it's, it's probably hard to understand, but we, we really need that stuff, that equipment ready to go to moment's notice, so I mean, having it all plugged in, warm, ready to go, you know, that winter, summer, whatever it is, we, we have to not be concerned with, is it going to run, where is it, you know, some of that, that's ultimately where we want to get, so as long as we don't lose sight of that goal, I mean, we're open to suggestions and how to make that work on the interim between that, you know, it's, it probably takes a lot longer conversation to kind of piece the parts out and figure out where everything's going to go.
Mr. Chair, I mean, we either leave it the way it is, we rent the city building, if we rent the city building, yeah, there's going to be a cost, but we may figure some things out in the process, most of our equipment will be able to be there, or we build something new, we're saying we don't have the budget to build something new, so I mean, we just eliminated a couple of our options, or am I wrong here?
I think you're wrong, we didn't say we're not going to build new, I think we just.
Not now.
I, I think you just gauge it so you, when the timing is, and, and I don't know if, if, if there's a needed highway for a, for a building that will be repurposed after this, then that's a different, and it's, and you can pay it with state aid money and, and sales tax money.
I think that makes more sense than, huh?
But that's just kicking the can down the road.
Right, I mean.
It is, but if it takes, if it takes more, so what you're banking on, Phil, is that in a year and a half, we, we have a new building, I don't know if we're going to have a new building for him in a year and a half, so say it's five years and we're three grand a month, you know what I mean, I, this is what concerns me, I like this idea that.
Can we put up a, can we put up a cold storage shed with gravel floor, no insulation for a hundred grand, forty by sixty?
These are short-term fixes to a long-term.
Not really, because if you go by the highway department, we have a lot of equipment sitting outside over there, we just do.
I, I think maybe, maybe Sheriff Gander could go to a highway committee meeting and, and you guys see if there's any short-term solution, and then we, as we continue looking at the long-term solution at a, at a.
Can, can we do this though, can we, if we make, if we make a bid amount and we get it, do we have to accept it?
If you're looking, are you talking about a building?
Because that. We make an offer, we make an offer to rent that facility, and we, and we, if the city facility, and we get it, do we have, do we have, there's a timeline we have to accept it in?
I believe if we bid it, that we will pay this much.
Is there, is there a time, is there a date that they're asking for a bid?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. That's, that's the issue, it's tomorrow.
The other thing is, if this is the solution, you still need to build a building, you know, and the timeline for that, you know, where that gets us, I mean, I'm, I'm assuming you can't snap up a building in two months from today, you know.
You could.
Okay.
For, at, at the highway department.
Yes.
You could put up a building out there, you could put a building up, you could spray foam.
But can it get through this process?
Even put a little concrete in it, Barry, you wouldn't have to sheet it or anything, but you could spray foam it, you wouldn't even have to heat it, if you, if you insulated the ceiling, put a ceiling in it and spray foamed it, it's going to be, if it's thirty below outside, it's going to be probably twenty, twenty-five degrees in there without any heat, you know, it's, it.
I, I realize you can do that in the private sector, but I mean, this process, I mean, look at the hoops that we went through with, you know, architectural designs building, if we can, great.
If store, cold storage building's under a certain dollar amount, we don't have to go for bids.
Okay.
It's, what is it, one fifty?
One seventy-five.
One seventy-five, so I mean, if, if we put up a building for under that, we don't have to go out for competitive bids, we, we can just do it.
And, and, and I don't even, like you said, this building that we're going to rent is still not going to house everything, so that's concerning that we rent something and, and didn't house everything that we need, you know.
It does get us power and get us everything in two locations with heat and everything, which, which are some of our needs, so.
Well, we can, we can put in a bid of two thousand a month, and if they accept it, then we don't look into other options, if they do accept it, then we're good for eighteen months, are we, is there a timeline of the?
It's a year lease.
Yeah.
Thought it was a year lease, I saw.
Two thousand a month for one year?
Two, so, is, is there, like I, like I asked for, is there, does it say anything in the RFP or whatever, RFK is, RFP is for Q or whatever, I don't know, that says, okay, we, we have, we just have submitted our bid on time, is there anything that states that we have to take, like, they, I'll take our offer, can we decline it?
I don't have it in front of me, it was in your packet last night, I can certainly look at it.
If we, if we offer two thousand a month, they take it, we're better off, I think, than, than going through all the hassle of building a.
Seven, two hundred square feet.
No, I agree, but if they, if they decline it, then we no longer have that option, that's, that's just, just throwing that out there.
So, it's a minimum of one year, and I think the square footage, you just saw that was seventy-two hundred square feet, did we just see that somewhere?
Yeah, there's two.
Yeah, there's two.
No, I like, if the, if we can build a building out.
Mr. Chair, one of the things with renting possibly, I mean, I'm not, I don't know what I'm supporting right now, but one of the things, if we did have that, we could see what a cement floor brings, we could see what, what housing those things mostly together would look like for a year. It would give us some time to come up with a plan with another plan if that is going to happen.
But we, we have the plan for, for the impound building. I mean, it's, it's, it's basically now would be to hire the con, hire the architect to, to meet with the individuals to say specifically how it would, how, what areas you'd, you'd, I mean, we're at the point where they're ready to design and this is a, they said at our last meeting, this is a short turnaround on this one. This is not a complex building. So we technically could be building this summer on that one.
If we chose to.
If we chose to.
We're ready to make that move.
If we want to go full steam on, on the impound building, you could be building this summer.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Nelson, if, if that's true, where are we getting the money and where is it going to go? I haven't heard that yet.
That money would be bond money that we would bond for in twenty-seven.
That's another discussion. I, I'm not sure I'd support that.
Well, there's no other way to pay for it unless you bond. I mean, there's no, there's no pot of money around that's going to pay for it unless we, we can, you can levy for it and you'd spike up your levy by.
Yeah.
Hundred percent in one year, or you bond for it and just put that out over, you know, this isn't a huge project over maybe five years. I mean, it's not a, our bond payments in that five hundred and fifty thousand, this, we're talking, this project would probably come in at, uh, you know, maybe up to two million. So if, you know, four to five-year bond payment would pay that off.
Okay, that answers one of the questions potentially. Where is the site of it? I heard Shane.
South of the jail.
The site is.
I thought you just said you didn't want to do that, so.
No, he doesn't want to build it.
The secondary shed there.
Temporary.
A temporary building.
Temporary building.
And then have.
Temporary fixed building would not, would hurt your.
Looking at that permanent site, yes.
Now do you have a clear on it?
Well.
Yeah, I mean, I'm.
Clear, I still don't think it.
You know, the sheriff's committee, the sheriff's department is ready to bring this commitment to the impound building to this board. They wanted to bring it today.
We, we.
And we said, God, without knowing.
What we're.
What we're doing, what the total impact of, of the budget for the state is.
I think what, what it comes down to is we, we can, I don't think any of us here like it, that we have to spend two million dollars, but it's a need, right? Like, I mean, we, we have all agreed here that it's a need. We need a new impound. We need a storage where we can have everything easily accessed, ready to use. So I think, are we willing to, to pay a certain amount of money to get us there temporarily and commit? I mean, if, if we're going to do this rental space, I think we have to then as a board be ready to commit to the larger impound lot coming up. If we're not going to do that.
Well.
Then.
I can tell you the sheriff's committee will make.
Potentially rent it indefinitely.
Would, well, if we tell them they have to, they can make do and, and have this equipment scattered around. If we want to move forward with the impound building and, and move forward and commit to it today, they will, I mean, they won't like it, but they can make do till we get that built. And the building time, I imagine, would be, it might.
By winter?
I don't know if it could be completed by winter or not.
I don't know.
That'd be a short turnaround, but he said it's not a long.
Said, said.
If, it's the contractor that you'd have, that bids it would have to be the one that, and we don't want to limit them too much or your prices go up.
Yep.
So I don't know, if you're ready to commit to that building.
If we build.
Architect's ready to design right now.
We, let's.
Not, only because I'm unsure of our future.
And Barry, and you're talking, you're already, you're already bonding for, I mean, that's the only way to do it really without, and I don't think anybody wants to raise the levy to pay for that all at once. You're talking about a bonding thing that we don't, we haven't seen the numbers on that. What's the interest rate going to be? How's that going to, what's that going to look like? I mean, I'm not ready to commit to that today. I haven't seen anything, any projections, anything on that.
We could commit to the initial stages of architect and that would cost us in that low forties. And that you would have a project dirt ready.
So, so then we're saying, keep your comments scattered for today and we would move forward with the building. How we're going to pay for that or what it's going to cost.
Well, we can.
That is to be determined?
You are, it's pretty safe to say, you know, I can throw numbers out there and, and estimate. Your bond, Mary, do you have an idea what a bond is going for now? A short-term bond like that, I bet you could get for four and a half a bond?
That's not what I mean, I mean two or six or seven.
Oh, I bet you, I'll bet you a year's wages, we'll get it under six and a half. On a bond for a county, a triple A county, I mean, our last one was what, three? You know, and that, um, I'm going to just Google it and see if AI can tell me, but, um, give a call to, um.
So currently, we're, we're leveraged, our county's leveraged six percent. I don't know if that's good or bad. I know the Prairie Lakes is leveraged up to about thirty percent, which is way too high. Six percent isn't unreasonable, but to add to that, I mean, so the debt service, what we pay to have our jail, what we pay to have our public works building, which I think we're, we're both needed, six percent of our budget goes to just pay off that. In tw- what is it, twenty thirty-four, one of them comes off and the other one comes off in twenty forty-two. So we are saying that whoever sits in these chairs in the future, you know, you guys got to deal with that. That, that, that's what we're saying. I, I don't think six percent is unreasonable, but do we want to add to it?
Well, we're not adding to it because the bond payment will come off of.
Of the courthouse.
Fifty off the courthouse.
Mm-hmm.
That's, that's the. And just, just so you know, when we built the highway building, we got the smart, the sales tax money has been sup, sup, or helping with roads, we eliminated five hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of the highway's budget that was going to pay for roads. So we eliminated that payment to make the bond, that payment now is making the bond payment for the highway building that was in their budget already. So we didn't raise the levy at that point because we were, because that five hundred and fifty was going to pay for roads that weren't covered under CASA. And so we took that money.
State highway.
Made the, made the building payment and took the sales tax money to, to pay for these roads that weren't covered under county state aid highway funding.
I think one of the things that we're, I'm, I'm hearing everything you're saying, Commissioner Hanson, but what, what is our other option when it comes to the impound lot and storage?
Rent. And I'm not suggesting that. I mean, that, that is our other, or leave it the way it is. And we all agree that we want these things in the same place. So I, I guess my big thing is, is where, which you've answered, and, and, and the cost to the future taxpayer of Becker County. That's my big, I want to know, I want some clarity on that.
Which I don't think we need to make a decision, concrete decision on that today. We have to, as a board, agree that we want to move towards that or, and/or the rental space. What are we going to do in the interim? Are we going to move forward, have the sheriff department continue to do what they're doing, or spend twenty-four to thirty-six thousand dollars a month, not a month, a year on.
Renting a space.
Renting a space.
Yep.
That's what we need to decide today.
So if we, if we do, if we do decide to put a bid for this rental property, we have to commit to it twelve months?
Mm-hmm.
I don't, I'm not, I, I don't, I, I like the idea of, I think we need an impound building that houses everything with, with an impound, fencing impound lot behind it. I, but, but as Barry and I talked about in the sheriff's committee, we don't know where we're at, so we pushed it, we've kind of pushed it off. But if the board wants to do that, we can do it tomorrow. I mean, because they're ready to go. They're ready to, the architect's ready to go. I mean, just have to make a phone call.
I think, I think it's hard to pull the trigger on saying yes.
Yeah.
Moving forward without having all the rest of the information as far as the bonds and the.
Well.
Price, well, I mean, price, we.
I agree.
You said your, what you want your payments to be and you extended out.
Yeah, the bond is going to replace the current bond that we have that in twenty twenty, that'll be done in February twenty twenty-seven. So it's not, it's not going to increase any more payment to the taxpayers, it's going to continue it.
Our current bond of the courthouse in twenty twenty-seven is going to come off. I don't know when in twenty twenty-seven, you said February, was a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollar payment with a two thousand dollar interest payment.
No.
So Barry, it says it right here.
For which?
The courthouse.
The remodel or, and the building?
This is the, uh, the, the highway and Murph, which were put together, that one comes off in twenty forty-two, and the jail bond, that comes off in twenty thirty-seven. So I'm not saying that isn't impossible to do. I'm just saying I would like to see, have a little more clarity on what we're doing and what we're setting up the future taxpayer for.
The last payment is one ninety-five.
Plus the interest.
Well, yeah, that's in twenty, that's because it's.
Twenty-seven.
Partial payment that year in twenty.
It had been four fifteen.
It's been.
Four fifty, it's four twenty.
It's, actually, we set that up to, to decrease as we move forward, knowing that we will have increased bonds in the future. The, the last, the last, um, I'm just looking at Eller's bot, uh, site here and, and they just listed one and it's the maturity, maturity is twenty twenty-six to twenty twenty forty-four and the coupon rate is from five percent currently and it drops down to four and a quarter. So about a, um, yield, so you're talking about a, told true interest rate of four point zero five nine percent. So you owe me your year's wages.
She did, I don't, I don't believe there's an official handshake bid.
I had a nod.
So.
She's like this.
And verbal agreements aren't legal in the state.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Nelson, so that, that, that six percent where you started is, is that, does that go up?
Five percent.
Five percent.
It goes down.
Goes down.
Five percent. And what is the minimum, what is the dollar amount?
Well, the.
Minimum.
Payments annually were six, between four ninety-five and six sixty-five, seven fifteen. So I'm just, I just pulled up one from, it's from Boston, Massachusetts, but the, the total, total bond was eleven million eight hundred and forty-seven, six oh four fifty-five, at a true interest rate of four point zero nine, four point zero five nine. Now, you can just go on their site and look at numerous ones, but it, that's what you, that's, you're looking at a four to five percent interest rate.
I would, I would like to see a workup on that and what it's going to be and how long we're going to term that out before I could, I could vote for that.
Well, yes, but.
Well, but we're not.
We're not doing, you wouldn't even consider doing that now. We have, we, to commit to it. The only thing you would possibly commit to, and I'm not suggesting we do that or not, is to commit to the architect on fees to, to get a project designed. And then, then it goes out.
I thought we already had that.
No.
No, we have not committed any funds to the architect.
Nope.
But if we commit to the architect, we have to, really, we need to commit to the project because if we don't do it now and do it a year from now.
It's going to change.
It's going to.
We'll have to redo the architect.
Well, you won't, you won't have to redo the architect. You have to make sure any, any changes in code are updated in the plans.
Yeah.
Which, in this one, it's not significant because it's, it's, it's not office space, it's not a lot of that. But, I mean, you, you just want to be cognizant that you commit to it right afterwards. And if you're, we're committed to it, we're committed to it, so.
But I think ultimately, are, are we ready to commit to rental space? Because that's, we, we, we need, we need that answer.
We need it today.
For tomorrow.
Yeah.
Yes, I, I, I know that they're interchanged and we're talking about long-term and short-term goals, but yes, I do need the answer on the rental. And I know one leads into the other.
Where's that rental money come from?
Great question.
That was going to be.
Do we think, well, the state, the state will have their answers by our next board meeting?
We can't.
I'm not going to bet on that.
We can't give a rental, we can't give a, a proposal or a bid on the rental property next board meeting.
I know, no, I know.
That, that's the only issue.
Do it, Mr. Chair, I, I thought Commissioner Nelson's idea wasn't bad. Put in two thousand dollars there and, 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 because we're going to need some time. By the time the architecture gets out, by the time we hear from the state, by the time, but we do need to revisit this. I, we can't do the short-term, we, we got, we got to think more for the long-term. This is a short-term thing.
That's right.
But, uh, um, we need to address this issue. Um.
And, and, and I don't know, Shane, you can probably stop me, but I know, just thinking of some of those things we haven't spent in the budget, like, for example, the ATV, there's, there was budgeted money for that and we're not going to spend on that. That's probably would make two payments. You know, I just, just randomly saying stuff, but.
I would have to look at the budget.
Yeah, I don't, I, I don't.
My guess is it's going to fall into ours too. And just one question on that payment. Do you know, does that include utilities or is that, are utilities above and beyond?
It does not include.
Above.
Just, so just the building plus.
Just the rent, yeah.
Yes, that's correct.
Well, with the, with us not having a short-term, I think if we can do it for two thousand a month, I think that would.
Okay.
That would, in my opinion.
Or a one-year lease.
For the one-year lease.
Okay.
Is that a motion?
Um, I'll make a motion to, to put a bid in for the city's space that Carrie has identified with her handout here of, or of two, for two thousand a month for a one-year term.
Okay.
Do we, so we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
So we have a motion by Barry and a second by Phil. Uh, do we have any further discussion? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All right, motion carries. So we'll put out a bid.
Thank you.
We'll see if it works.
Yep.
All right, I will respond.
So, Mr. Chair, so like, that's got cemented floors, it's going to have everything together there. I mean, as the architects design, hopefully if we can get that and the architects design, I mean, you guys, you guys will know what you want, right? So, I mean, you'll be a.
The rental space you're talking about?
Correct. I mean, to me.
I haven't seen it. I was, I was.
I know.
Off work that day. Uh, my lieutenant and sheriff did tour it and they said that the building looked acceptable for our needs at the time, yes.
You're talking about the needs of the impound building?
Well, this is a short-term fix.
Yeah.
Which I know we don't want, I don't even want. But the long-term is to do the architectural plan and something, so you make sure as you're living in that one and you have all your things together, you know what you want in the new building, or maybe you already know that.
And then, and we've been. We've been working on it, we've been asking for this for eleven years, so it's gone through a couple of, uh, it's gone through a couple of changes.
The architect will actually draw in, like he did for the highway building. He'll draw in the vehicles in their spots.
In their spots.
Show the, the room around it.
Yeah.
Um, show the doors. We had discussions last time about size of doors even and what the needs are. This will be vetted.
Okay.
Extensively, once it gets to that stage. And it's not by people like us, it's by the people that are using the equipment and how it best, like Jim, Jim had his whole staff going and re, you know, what makes the best sense for everything. And it worked pretty good, Jim?
Okay, all right. So we'll move on to Carrie here with number six.
Yeah. Um, so, Mr. Chair, in your packet, you have resolution one D. This is for, um, this was talked about last board meeting and, and voted on. Mary had asked for a resolution in the packet. I already referenced, I spelled Dutton.
Mm-hmm.
It's correct now, but yeah. Um, so I am just looking for approval for this resolution for the acquisition, which we have already voted on for the Pelican watershed building.
Mr. Chair, um, Carrie.
Yes.
I would like a little bit different, um, wordage in there.
Okay.
Um, when we go to the now therefore be it resolved, um, I think one time is two words, one-time payment. Um, but then, um, the last sentence, to allow Becker County dismantle in the building, create additional, I think we, I mean, I think we just, after
But then, the last sentence, to allow Becker County dismantle and the building create additional, I think we, I mean, I think we just, after that, instead of, I think we have the right to do whatever we want.
Yeah.
Whether we want to or not. I would say, and give up all claims to Dutton Locks Park in its, to give up all Pelicans' current and future claim to.
Interest or claim?
Interest in Dutton Locks.
Interest in Dutton Locks.
They didn't have any claim or interest.
Well, they had the building and they keep, and I want to make sure that they say that they don't have anything ever again in the future.
So do I.
So I would like that instead of the allow, to allow Becker County, if we buy the building, you're not allowing us. We do whatever we want with it. We want to keep it for storage for a year, we keep it for storage for a year.
Fair.
There you go, Shane, you got a storage bill for it. I was, I was making a joke.
It's cold storage.
All right.
All right, so do we have a motion to approve One D?
I'll make the motion with the change of the last sentence to give up all claims.
So we have a motion by Barry, a second by Phil, do we have any discussion?
I just, I just want to reiterate my, my position in that I do not think we should do this. We just got done talking about spending additional money and I don't think this is where we should be spending thirty thousand dollars. I just wanted to reiterate that.
Well, and I'm, I, I kinda agree with you, Erica, but it is a good deal and we do need the parking there. And they, it's probably, if, if we don't buy them out, they're gonna stay there. We do need the parking and that's cheap for that. And if they drop all claims to that area.
Well, I don't know that they had any claims to begin with.
Well, kinda, they, they were in.
They think they do.
Yeah.
But, but I, but I want to say my, what I had said at the last board meeting that I think we should, should still potentially consider is, what was mentioned at the last meeting was, we would have to make changes to that building to make it work for us to be able to use, not remove it, but use additional. We'd have to move the garage door so that we could have additional parking. I would like for us to get a quote to see what that would, what that would cost to do. That's what we pay them. If it costs fifteen thousand, if it costs twenty thousand, that's what we pay them. I think we have this arbitrary thirty thousand dollars that I know you guys negotiated down from a larger amount. But I still think they got their fifteen thousand dollars worth for the last forty years, thirty years, whatever it is that they've been there. So I know we need it. I know we needed additional parking out there. I just think that we need to consider our other options than just giving them a one-time payment.
Mr. Chair, they did put sixteen thousand seven hundred into it and they were the driving force that made the deal happen, which eventually became a county park. But I duly noted everything you said. I can't.
I don't think we're, anyone's disagreeing a whole lot, but in any negotiation, both parties feel like they didn't get what they wanted. And I don't think we get, got what we wanted, but we got it resolved. And I mean, we, we didn't, we didn't, we got what we wanted, but we didn't want to pay.
And, and then one other thing, Carrie, will you explain where the money's coming from?
Sure, the local and tribal consistency fund.
So, yeah.
It was not, I know there was some discussion about it coming out of Steve's budget, but we would not do that.
Steve's got two, two.
The local tribal consistency fund, the grant.
Steve's got two funds that we could use. One of them deemed was not, could not pull that funds from, is that correct? And the other one is down to about seventy-one thousand, which we. Still has.
Yeah, so, so that, that's why I can support it today is because of where the money's coming from.
Would the local tribal contingent, whatever fund, would that money be able to go for rental space for Sheriff's Department?
I don't think there's a, there are not a lot of restrictions.
The only restrictions are you can't lobby.
Yeah, you can't use.
That is the only restriction that I'm aware of.
Way to put a monkey wrench in it. Oh, yeah, we have a motion and a second, I'm sorry. Do we have any more discussion? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
Mr. Chair, the last item that I have on is the CHIPS contract. This contract came about, there was a, with one of our attorneys that was contracted previously resigned due to some personal issues. And they will be done, Ms. Walker will be done the end of June. So the individual that has been recommended to fill in the remainder of this contract was actually one that was, expressed interest when we did these contracts previously. We had more, we had more interest in the positions than we did physicians. So I did speak with Brian McDonald with regards to their, so the recommendation was that we reach out to Ms. Norby and ask if, if she was interested in fulfilling this contract, which she was. And she had previously expressed interest as well. So this contract goes through the end of the year and then it automatically renews for one year.
Motion approved.
Motion by Barry, do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Erica, do we have any discussion?
Okay, I, I have a little discussion, Mr. Chair. Three thousand dollars a month, now, this is, this isn't retainer, this is actual pay?
Yes.
And they get assigned cases through the court and then they.
What if there are no assigned cases? Are we still paying this or?
Well, I don't think there's ever been a month. We have a lot of cases. We have, is it three now?
We have three attorneys.
So three is, or four, is this the fourth?
Three.
Three.
Three, okay.
Three.
And we're required to provide legal counsel.
Yep.
For the parents of the children.
And children above them.
If we don't have available, then they, then the judges assign and it's a lot more expensive.
Yep.
And they bill by the hour.
Yeah.
Do we have any more discussion? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, right, motion carries.
I should also note that that's the same price whether they have one case or.
Ten cases.
Ten, fifteen cases.
Well, and I did happen to ask the exiting Ms. Walker, how many cases she currently had, and she had ten on her caseload. She was asking not to be reassigned additional cases as she's trying to exit. So that'll have to be worked out between the court of where hers are reassigned.
All right, Carrie, do you have anything else here?
I don't, but I would suggest maybe before your presentation, you may want to take a break.
Yeah, we'll, I was gonna do that. We're gonna take a break till ten thirteen, that's five minutes. Seeing as soon as we have all commissioners up, ready to go. No, no hints involved in that. All right, we have Amanda and Vanessa, right? Would you guys please come up and, or Amanda, yeah.
Good morning. So I'm Vanessa Coleman. I am a public health program coordinator for Becker County Public Health. I am an RN by trade with twenty years of healthcare experience.
How many years?
Twenty.
No way.
Yes, sir.
I don't believe it. I haven't checked your ID because you don't look old enough.
Commissioner Nelson has about sixty years of experience.
I appreciate the compliment. So I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you about measles today. Certainly, this is a timely topic. As of yesterday afternoon, I had to update this presentation because Minnesota confirmed two cases. So this is a timely topic. So the goals for today is simply just sharing some information about what measles is, what it looks like, how it could impact our community, what public health has already done, and what we would do in the event of positive cases within Becker County. You can go ahead and go to the next slide, Peggy, whenever you're ready.
Was that outbreak, or there was a Mall of America case?
Correct, yes. Yep, that's correct. So there's, and I have a slide going through that as well. There's two cases, both are within the Twin Cities metro area. They're unrelated to each other. One is an adult that was exposed through a domestic flight. And one is a child and that is who was at Mall of America and we're not sure how that person was exposed yet. But we do know that the child was unvaccinated. Okay, so to begin with, we'll go through what measles is. So this is a viral respiratory illness, so similar to what you think of for influenza or COVID. It's gonna affect the entire respiratory system. It actually will affect other parts of the body, especially the brain. I'll speak more to that in just a little bit. This is highly, highly contagious. It is in fact the most contagious disease that we currently know of. It's spread through the air, so when people are talking, breathing, sneezing, coughing, those droplets go out into the air. It actually has the ability to stay in the air for up to two hours, which is significant when we start thinking about things like apartment buildings and getting into the ventilation system. It also is spread by droplets. So you sneeze, those droplets fall on a counter, somebody touches it up to two hours later. They go eat a sandwich, whatever, they then expose themselves that way as well. It usually resolves in about ten days. Most people don't have serious complications or long-term medical effects. However, it is very severe and deadly, especially in young children under the age of five years of old or people who have severe immunocompromised. So those are things like HIV/AIDS, people going through cancer treatments, certain chronic conditions, or people using some medications, especially things like steroids over a long period of time. It is vaccine preventable. So one dose is given at twelve months of age and that gives about ninety-three percent protection. The second dose is given around kindergarten age, four to six years, and that gives ninety-seven percent protection. So that means if you've had two doses, you have a ninety-seven percent chance of being totally fine, even if you were exposed. This would impact our community because one in five require hospital support.
A quick question.
Yes, sir.
So at ninety-seven percent and you, and you are in contact with it.
Yes.
Can you spread it then?
They consider you not contagious if you are fully vaccinated and still exposed. You would monitor for symptoms up to twenty-one days because there is a three percent chance you may develop it.
If you aren't, if you don't get any symptoms, are you contagious?
No.
Okay.
No, so if you're fully vaccinated and you're exposed, you don't have to do anything and you would not be spreading it.
Be a carrier then?
Possibly, but you're, you're shedding the virus less because your body is, the vaccine's working, your immune system's kicking in and killing it off faster than what you would be spreading it. It is, it has a very high rate of infection. So ninety percent of people who are susceptible or unprotected will develop measles. So if we had ten people who are either unvaccinated or immunocompromised, nine out of ten of those would develop this disease, which is significant compared to something like influenza. It is significantly more contagious. You can go ahead and go to the next slide. So how do we know who is immune or protected and who is not? So people born before nineteen fifty-seven, it was circulating, they were likely exposed during their childhood and developed natural immunity. People who've had a blood test called a measles IGG, that's looking at your actual immune levels. If you've had that done and proven immunity, that way you are protected. If you have lab confirmation of disease, in other words, you tested positive, you are now immune because again, you've developed that natural immunity. You've had documentation of two vaccines or there's evidence pointing to immunity. So this could be something like a similar blood test for Rubella, which is the R in the MMR vaccine. It's measles, mumps, and rubella. If you've proven immunity to Rubella, you're very likely immune to measles because they're given in the same vaccine. Some people are vaccinated for their jobs and they could provide documentation of that, that would also be immune. People that are at risk are people who know they've never gotten vaccinated, maybe they choose not to vaccinate for whichever reason. If they received a vaccine between nineteen sixty-three to nineteen sixty-seven, they may need an additional dose. And that is because the vaccine originally came out in nineteen sixty-three and they saw it wasn't providing as good a coverage as what they thought it could or would. And so they did a new and improved version, which came out in nineteen sixty-eight. So those people born after fifty-seven through sixty-seven, they likely might need another dose. And that would be a conversation with their provider. They could get a blood test, checking that immune level, and then determine whether or not they need another dose. Or certainly if they don't know if they've had a vaccine, they would be at risk as well. Certainly infants under the age of twelve months, because that is when you can get that first dose of vaccine. Or again, if you are severely immunocompromised, because your immune system is not working correctly, even if you were vaccinated, you're still at risk.
How soon is, if you get a booster, like, say, not that I'm in that age group where you. Say a person is, you know, they did receive it then and you, how soon would that new vaccine be, be active?
Two to three weeks for it to kick in and be effective. Yep. So this is a great time for people to kind of get ahead of this, knowing that it is getting closer and closer to home, to look at what your vaccine status is and consider getting a vaccine, knowing it takes two to three weeks to essentially kick in.
I also have a question, not that I'm in this age bracket. Would you say, is the suggestion just to have a booster or to actually do the test to see if you have immunity?
I would talk with your doctor first.
Okay.
Typically, I'm gonna, what's typically going to happen is they're gonna say, let's check your levels and make sure. Because maybe you were exposed at some time as a child and not sure. Or your parents don't remember or what have you. Sometimes it's hard finding those vaccine records as adults. So that's usually a good first step, is let's just confirm whether or not you need this and then go ahead and vaccinate after that result. You can go ahead and go to the next slide. So why are we concerned about this? We're seeing decreased vaccination rates, not only worldwide, but certainly right here in our own county. And I think there's a misconception that measles is not anything to worry about, it's eradicated, we haven't heard about this forever, what's the big deal? But measles is very much so alive and well around the world. So in two thousand twenty-two, there were nine million cases worldwide, a hundred and thirty-six thousand of those died, most of which were young children. COVID certainly impacted this. That's when we really started to see a decrease in vaccination rates. So the US might lose that elimination protection that we once had and this could again become endemic, which means we're gonna see it commonly, just like you see common colds and flu. That very well could happen. Rates in Becker County for vaccination have decreased by five percent over the last three years. That doesn't sound like very much, but it really is significant. So for example, the State Department of Health has a model that projects if you had eight hundred thousand cases and you saw vaccination rate decrease by ten percent, that could blow up to over eleven million cases. So a five percent decrease is significant.
Mr. Chair, so is that five percent decrease in measles vaccination or any vaccination?
This is specific to MMR, but we are seeing pretty consistent across the board for all childhood immunizations. You can go ahead and go to the next slide. You can go ahead and go to the next slide. 28 reported cases. So, Burke County is in the northwest part of the state, Cass County is where Fargo is, Grand Forks, and then Williams County, again, in the northwest part of the state. So, our original concern yesterday was, you know, we were going to make the point of, certainly, people in our area travel to Fargo all the time, shopping, restaurants, sporting games, what have you, and vice versa. Those folks are coming to our area, especially this time of year, to enjoy the lakes area. So, we were concerned our residents could go there, be exposed, bring it back, or they who live there could be bringing it here and exposing us that way as well. But again, yesterday afternoon, that changed, and we now have two cases in Minnesota, specifically Washington and Dakota Counties, which we briefly talked about. So, again, people traveling to the cities could be exposed, or people traveling here from the cities to their lake cabins could certainly bring it this way as well. And just to reiterate, Becker County is currently at zero cases. You can go to the next slide, please.
I guess I should interrupt you, Amanda.
Yeah.
When we had our Partnership for Health meeting, the cases in North Dakota were at 12, is that correct, last month? I thought he said 12.
12 or 13.
12 or 13, so it's pretty much doubled, or more than doubled.
Correct, yep, and that's typically what we see with this, is it will start doubling very quickly because of how contagious that it is. So, just to kind of further prove that point, one person with influenza, so if I had influenza, I could infect one person in this room. If I had measles, I could infect 18. So, it is, again, very highly contagious.
Mr. Chair, and those 28 measles cases in North Dakota, all unvaccinated?
I have not looked at that information. I would assume a majority probably are. I could find that information and get you a more direct answer, if you like. So, what does this look like? So, symptoms start seven to 12 days after being exposed, and this is going to kind of start looking like cold and flu symptoms. It's known for what's called the three Cs. So, this is going to be a high fever, 104, 105 fever is not uncommon with this, and then those three Cs, cough, coriza, that's kind of congestion, runny stuffy nose, and conjunctivitis, which is what you think of for pink eyes, so some red irritated eyes. You can go to the next slide. And then this is going to progress, so when we're typically seeing them clinic, hospital, they're going to have some more symptoms. So, they're going to be lethargic, and they're just looking at them, and you know this person is quite sick. Coplic spots are what's in the smaller circle image there. Those are white little spots inside the cheeks, usually back towards the molars, and that's kind of what we call a red flag symptom of, that's when we really should start questioning this might be measles. And that's because before that, it's kind of cold, flu symptoms, right? It could be allergies, it could be anything. This is when we start flipping the script of questioning this could be measles, because it is specific to measles, and it happens a couple days right before the rash onset. So, the rash is what measles is really infamous for. It's a very specific rash. It starts somewhere up on the head, so this could be the face, the hairline, behind the ears, and it's going to move down towards the body. So, it's going to move down the neck, down the trunk, down your arms and legs. And again, it's a very specific rash. It's what's called maculopapular, if you need a fancy new word to add to your dictionary. And that means it is flat, red, discolored areas, and then it's going to have pinpoint little bumps around it. Even though the picture of the rash on the left looks rather miserable, it's usually not itchy. Still, again, you have flu-like symptoms, you're really not feeling so hot, and now you have this rash on top of it, so it's certainly not a fun disease to have. The rash is significant because that is what's considered your day zero. So, you are contagious four days before that rash starts, through four days afterwards is when people could be spreading it around the community. So, again, easy for people to assume, this is my allergies, this is a cold, they're out and about doing their thing, and all of a sudden, now they get this rash, and what the heck's going on? You can go to the next slide. So, like any other disease, there's always complications. So, common complications are things like diarrhea, ear infections. Encephalitis is swelling of the brain, which can cause permanent brain damage, and pneumonia, which pneumonia is the leading cause of death related to measles. 30% of people will have complications. One in 20 will develop pneumonia, and one in five, again, are going to need some hospital support. Of course, death is part of this, like any other disease, that is at the rate to one to three out of 1,000 cases, which really, that's where we're at nationally. We just jumped up to 1,132 cases nationwide, and we're currently at three deaths, so we're certainly hanging within that parameter. Another concerning thing it causes is something called subacute sclerosing panencephalitis, huge word, which is why we call it S-S-P-E for short. So, you might recognize that encephalitis part of it, so again, it's brain swelling. However, this is really significant, and it's very progressive, and it is absolutely fatal. So, this looks like cognitive changes, they're not thinking and acting like they normally would, they're having significant muscle spasms, they're having seizures, and it's going to progress and progress up until they eventually die, typically within one year from this diagnosis. Thankfully, it is rare, it's one in 100,000 cases. The concerning part to this, though, is this happens years after you were infected. So, we're not worried so much about the here and now, and I have a rash, and I'm miserable, have a fever, I have pneumonia, seven to 10 years down the road, somebody could develop this and die. So, even more significant, if a pregnant person were to develop measles, it does cross the placenta and infect that unborn baby, and seven to 10 years later, that child could die. Another concerning thing that this does, that I do not have on the slide, is measles has the ability to completely wipe out all immune memory. So, as we're growing, your body is exposed to different things, and your immune system remembers, oh, we had this, we didn't like it, and we've built some protection against it, so they can attack it quicker, and you don't get sick again. This wipes out all of that, including childhood immunizations. So, where this really impacts our community is certain people are going to start getting sicker and sicker because you don't have that immune protection. You're going to be missing work, missing school, daycare, all of those things, so that's rather concerning part of this as well. There is no treatment available. So, things like flu, we think of Tamiflu, COVID had Paxlovid, we had those antiviral medications, this does not have that. The only medications given would be to manage symptoms. So, certainly, you could take things like Tylenol, Ibuprofen for a fever, you may be given some IV fluids in a hospital. You might get antibiotics to treat infections that happen afterwards, those ear infections, pneumonia, that might require some antibiotics. Specifically, some misinformation going around is about vitamin A. We're hearing a lot about, well, just take vitamin A, take cod liver oil, and you won't get this. And that is not true. It doesn't work to prevent measles. It does, however, help reduce the significance of the disease once you develop it, which is why it's given in a hospital, is trying to reduce how much this is going to impact you. For some odd reason, measles depletes your vitamin A level, which is why this is given as a treatment, because when your vitamin A level gets low, it affects your eyes, can actually lead to blindness. But the flip side to that, if people go out and start supplementing themselves with vitamin A, most people are not deficient in vitamin A, you could actually get toxic from it. So, you could get headaches, nausea, vomiting, even up to a coma. So, again, this is not something advised, it is only given in a hospital setting as a part of treatment prescribed by a doctor. You can go to the next slide. Okay, so what are we doing in public health? We've put in quite a bit of time on this already, the last two, three weeks, trying to kind of get a jump start, knowing the writings on the wall, this could be coming into our area. So, we're doing things just like this. We're getting out, we're doing community education, we've gone on radio on Hodgepodge, Lake Media's been fantastic in welcoming us there. We've done several Facebook posts explaining, do you know your vaccine status? This is who needs an MMR, this is what measles looks like, those kinds of information. Last week, we reached out to all the daycare childcare centers within Becker County. We wrote them a letter, just saying we're trying to share some information, spread some awareness, we shared a frequently asked question sheet, and again, a one-page about misinformation around vitamin A. We did get approval to go through county buildings and take down all the COVID signage and replace that with measles, so sharing some education that way as well. We are working closely with community partners, with Essential Health, Stanford Health, certainly our Department of Health, and epidemiology, those are people who specialize in disease, they know every disease under the sun, inside and out. And we are working to prepare specifically in our office. We had a mandatory meeting with our public health staff about two weeks ago, doing a presentation similar to this, just kind of brushing up on what measles is, what it looks like, what we would be doing, because this isn't something we've seen for a while, so we kind of needed to have a bit of a refresher. And tomorrow, we will actually be doing a drill, we're doing a tabletop exercise of what it would look like if we had a positive case in Becker County.
Mr. Chair, Vanessa, do you have access to who hasn't been immunized from measles? I mean, I know school records have that.
In terms of county employees, or?
Well, no, I mean, everyone in Becker County, I mean, schools.
So, what the options are, I can look through the State Department of Health, I have access to a website that tells me the current vaccination rate, which we're currently at 86%, specifically who is not vaccinated. We do have something called MIC, which is basically Minnesota's Registry of Immunizations. We do have the capacity to go through that and poll who has not been vaccinated.
Rather than going to the masses, which is, the words alter already, why don't you go to the people who haven't been vaccinated? Because that's the point of this, right?
Yep, and that's, that's going to be part of our response as well, and I believe our local healthcare partners are going to be doing that as well, as pulling those same reports, who hasn't been vaccinated, and doing some outreach that way as well. So, that is in progress there.
But those systems won't poll specific names.
They can.
They can?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep.
I'm sure that would be a cumbersome process, I.
It's timely, yes, because you could be potentially talking about hundreds of people, and then the process of going through, and are we sending them? So, when I, it's part of my background, is I worked family medicine clinic, and we did this report monthly. We polled vaccine reports monthly, that was part of our quality improvement process, and did consistent reach out. We would send MyChart messages, phone calls, letters, but there's only so many times you can preach the message, if people choose not to vaccinate, they choose not to vaccinate. But we can share the information and let them make a decision.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, you have a 10-year-old, you may not remember if you chose to have your child vaccinated or not.
Correct.
I think you, I think, I think most kids are vaccinated, I think you would be aware, because you'd have to elect not to be vaccinated.
Correct, yep.
So, I think if, I mean, though, I mean, my kids are all vaccinated, but if I, you would have to, you would have to be consciously say, I do not want these vaccinations, I think. And there, and there are reasons for people that are, there are real reasons not to be vaccinated. There are some people with health concerns that.
That are not eligible.
You know, have had past reactions, or have, so I mean, everybody shouldn't, I mean, just because, I mean, they have to evaluate themselves and work with their doctor. But I think for most people, I mean, now looking, looking at our age, it's like, well, you know, you don't worry about it when you're young, you know, in your 20s and 30s, but it's the people that aren't healthy that you're trying to protect in your, in your community. I mean, those that are on treatment for cancer, I mean, where their immune system is zero, these are, these are very significant. You don't want measles coming around if you're on, on some treatments for cancer. I mean, because that's, those are the things that kill a lot of the cancer victims, is outside diseases.
So, they're just, yep, correct.
That they're not immune to anymore.
Yep, and your healthcare provider does review your vaccine status each time you're going, and so I know our local clinics are going to be asking some screening questions as well when people are coming in, asking if they have those symptoms, if they are, somebody is notified, they're polled right away. And those nurses go through and prep those charts with every visit, and they are looking at who's vaccinated, who's not, and they're being offered those vaccines every time that person comes into the clinic. But again, like Barry said, it is a conversation for that person to decide whether or not they would like to, or even if they qualify, there are a few people who do not qualify. You can go ahead to the next slide. So, this one's basically what we're going to do when, if we get a positive case. So, really, Minnesota Department of Health is who would lead the response, and we would be there to support them locally. How much involvement we have is going to depend on how many cases we have. It only takes three cases to be considered having an outbreak. So, what the process would look like, person goes into the clinic, the big part is reporting that disease and testing that disease. So, provider has any level of suspicion, they test the patient, and they have to immediately report to the Minnesota Department of Health. There is a 24-hour phone number that they have access to and can call. If it is a highly suspicious case, Department of Health would contact us and give us a courtesy heads up. Once that person is positive, the epidemiologist calls that ordering doctor and says, hey, John Doe tested positive. That doctor then calls the patient, says you're positive, this is what you need to do, and then Department of Health is going to contact us at the public health office and say, hey, we have a positive case. And then next step is case investigation. So, Department of Health would actually contact John Doe, or whoever tested positive, and they're going to do an interview and ask, where have you been the last 21 days to the best of their recollection? Hopefully, that is done within the first 24 hours, and that information is used to then create a list of exposure sites. So, they went to the pharmacy, they went to the movie theater, they went to the grocery store, they went, where have you? And then that list is posted as a site, a list of when somebody could have potentially been exposed with specific days and times, so that people can watch for any symptoms. Part of that may be that Department of Health contacts us and asks us to either post letters or a flyer of some sort at those specific locations, just again, to bring awareness, hey, if you were here on this day and time, you may have been exposed, you should monitor for these symptoms. And that's it, you can go to the next slide. So, I welcome any other questions that you may have.
Kind of asked them as we went along.
But this was super, super helpful.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
I learned a lot about measles today.
Good, good. And my contact information is there, you're certainly welcome to reach out anytime, happy to help.
So, have you read the book of John Sanford, book Toxic Prey?
I have not.
So, John Sanford's an author from Minneapolis, St. Paul area, and he wrote a book about, the title's Toxic Prey. It's a, and obviously, he's murder mystery, and so there's a, what's the word for it? An, entologist?
Epidemiologist?
No, but it.
Entomologist is like a bug specialist, is that what we're thinking?
A-G-O-N-I-S, antoji, and, what is that word?
Antagonist.
No, no. Anyway, he's, and I was thinking anted, antidote.
He is in that age.
Anyway, he's combining a measles virus with a Maulberg virus, which is deadly but not very contagious. So, this guy combined them, so it's a very deadly virus that he's going to release that no one has a vaccine for, and kill off half the, at least minimum half the world, so that we can better regulate all that. It's very interesting, because it says specifically about, it talks about the viruses and the, and the tox, or the rate of exposure, and measles, and that's what they were saying, measles is very contagious, but everyone's immune, so it's not as deadly, but the Maulberg would be deadly, so he created a virus that was going to kill half the population. Toxic prey, if you're interested.
Interesting.
All right, does anybody else have anything for Vanessa or Amanda? Well, thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Yeah, we. Yeah, let us know what's going on, especially since.
Well, I'm going to check mine, I know.
North Dakota's cases have doubled, or more than doubled.
Yes.
Within two weeks.
Within two weeks, huh?
Thank you again.
Yeah, thanks. All right, let's move on to information technology.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. I'm bringing forth to you, for you today, a memorandum for action. That was really a very interesting thing, I mean.
It was.
I knew nothing about measles till now. And so, what I'd like to bring forth to you is our security and awareness training that we use, which is called Know Before, is up for renewal. The renewal is, we could do it for one year or for three years. I'm strongly suggesting we do it for three years because of a price protection and savings. What I'm looking for right now is the okay to renew it at $25,929. The funding, this is where Barry's going to figure out where the $19 comes from, the funding is from the Local Assistance and Tribal Consistency Fund, and the current amount balance in that fund is $55,948.23, which then would leave $30,019.23, and I think the other $30,000 was to help move that building.
Or acquire.
Yeah, to acquire that building. So, so that, that's what I'd like to do, and so now I'm, I'm kind of ready for some questions.
Yeah, I just want to know what we talked about at Finance yesterday was that, you know, we do have the funds to pay for the three years, and then we just suggested, and Judy agreed, that we would then plan yearly, that we would budget yearly, so that we, in capital, something planned.
Yeah, I mentioned that.
Some fund, that's very over.
It's not a big ticket item, but I mentioned that we could possibly put this into a capital fund where she could budget yearly, the third of it for three years, go into a capital fund, and then we'd be able to use that to renew.
And IT has a number of these?
Yeah, yeah.
Some of them, we pay yearly, some of them, we have to prepay.
Yeah.
So, I'll make sure that I know which is which, and make sure I budget that way.
Hold on, Mr. Chair, this is not something that would go into a capital fund.
No, no. No, no.
No, it's just the way we're going to budget.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, but the reason, the reason why I'm saying that is because in a, in a regular budget fund, you cannot carry over funds to the next year. In a capital fund, you can't. That's what I'm saying, is-
I mean, I think our cybersecurity could be considered a capital. I mean, it's not a-
Yeah. I mean, it's not a big-ticket item.
It's not a big-ticket item, and it's not a physical thing, but it's important.
Because of the contracts are usually longer, and the, it's, it's a benefit to pay for it early.
The question is, are you going to put a three-year contract in a capital fund, so you budget for it annually, rather than once every three years? If it's significant dollar amounts, it should be in a fund where you keep it in your, in the capital line budget.
Mm-hmm.
So you're not, so you have the money budgeted for annually, so you're not spiking that up in one year of if, like, I mean, I don't know, Carrie would probably have to develop some threshold of, it's over X amount of dollars, that you want to budget this long-term, and, I mean, if it's five thousand, it's probably not necessary to budget a-
Yes. No, but I, I just figured a twenty-five thousand dollar amount over three years.
And the Know Before is a top-notch training?
Yes, it is recognized in the state of Minnesota by the Criminal Justice Group, and we've also, I think we've had very great success with it. We've done a lot of training, we've had a lot of hours of training. I believe each person has probably had about twenty-one hours of training from this over the previous three years. And I believe it stopped, I mean, we have caught some very bad things through this product, that if people would have answered, we would have had a much different outcome. But they put it in, so then the, the product helps us go grab it out of everybody else's emails, so you don't even see it. And that's what's really nice about it.
And I forward you a couple that-
Yes, you have.
Good job.
You guys don't have the thing to, to send it directly to the, to the product, so I do that for you. And it's, it's amazing what it finds.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve recommendation for the security awareness training and simulated phishing platform for three years.
Second.
With the amount of twenty-five nine twenty-nine.
Twenty-five nine twenty-nine.
Coming out of the tribal awareness training.
Yep.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion?
One item of discussion. I was looking through just general budgets, and I noticed for, for IT under this, this is one item under that. It was, it was like a much bigger number for, it was like half a million dollars. I don't have it in front of me, but it was a number that seemed very high.
For Know Before training?
No, not Know Before, just general security.
Oh, well, I, you know, I, I, why don't we do that and just come up and see me, and I could-
I want to know all the things we do.
Does that have a little, I have a spreadsheet that kind of rolls up into those numbers?
This is just one item-
Yes.
Of IT security. You know what, I'll get back with you on that.
Okay.
So do we have a motion and a second? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Judy.
Thanks, Judy. Jim, for Highway, we have.
Morning, Jim.
Morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
One item for your consideration. We have a bid award. We opened bids earlier this week, or actually late last week, and this is for our intersection lighting project funded through highway safety funds, federal funds, which pays ninety percent of the cost of this. We had two bidders bid on the project, and the low bidder is Mark's Electric out of Detroit Lakes. Now, they're about five percent over our estimate, but within the range of the funding on this project.
So, so when I read this, Jim, I, you know, we didn't have much dialogue with this. So I, I kind of was thinking, when I read lighting, you know, and you read it the first time, you just think, I was thinking a new cross or a new stoplight, you know, basically. So I was like, where is this going? So then I did text Jonah, and then he informed me that this was what, he kind of told me what it was. But, you know, probably a little bit more detail on, so where are these, where are the lights? I think we talked about it before, about where the lights are going.
Yeah, there's eleven intersections that were, have been prioritized in our-
That's why you probably, you didn't want this discussion.
No, you know, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Nelson, you did. I remember seeing it a couple months ago. We, we did talk about this, that it's coming.
I know when we, we hired the contractor to do the things, we presented, and there's a couple intersections that you thought didn't need it, like 103 and, and Highway 10, we'd look at putting a flashing light. And I know there's some considerations for, you know, the, the meter fees that we get charged now, which I think is kind of outrageous, and, and some of that, for a light that just sits out there. And, but eleven intersections, I can run through them here.
I don't, I don't need to run.
No, we- Mr. Chair, I'll move-
We need this capital fund.
But it's, yeah, it's-
If you could leave that with me, I'd look at it.
Sure. Mr. Chair, I will move to approve Revolution six dash twenty-five, one A.
Yep. So Phil's, we have a motion by Phil, second by Richard. Do we have any other discussion?
Just the discussion that you didn't get the charges reduced for monthly fees for having these lights on each site?
Haven't figured out a way yet, no. No, no takers on that.
And there, there's no solar that can keep these lit overnight?
Uh, we didn't bid out solar lights. We haven't seen good success in those during the winter months. They kind of go dark, because of not a sunlight on that.
I just, just to note, this, there's an annual, there's an annual expense that will now be forever. And it's not huge, but-
No, but it's, it's more than that.
What's the saying? If you save pennies, they make dimes? You save dimes, they make dollars?
Yeah. All, all I know is that I don't think that we've ever had any complaints of these lights. People really like them, yeah.
Mr. Chair, Jim, how many lights? We're adding eleven to how many that we already have in the county? What'd you guess?
Uh, last project, I think we had about thirteen, and maybe like ten before that. And I think we've got pretty much everything covered now that we need.
Forty, maybe?
Yeah.
At twenty-five bucks a month each?
Yep. Yep. All right, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any more discussion? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. All right, thanks, Jim.
I think it was actually Becker six and eleven, the one, Becker six and five, that was the one that I didn't think needed.
All right. Thanks, Jim. Steve?
I'll have a, a lit walkway to my deer stand.
We also, Steve, we also added the Eddie-
Good morning.
To the, the-
From the consent agenda?
Yeah.
Okay. So you have two items to cover. One is the capital purchase request for some items for organics program. I'd like to purchase some concrete blocks for twelve thousand three hundred and thirty-five dollars. And then also, a second purchase request is to purchase a cart tipper and a cart that goes on a truck that's from Perkins Manufacturing for the amount of twelve thousand eight hundred and seven dollars and ninety-three cents.
Where do you use that?
On the cart tipper. That's going to go on the front of the truck, our front loader trucks, you have to have-
The picture in there.
Yeah.
Good picture.
No, I see the picture. Where, I said where, what, in what, I mean, we're not-
So we're, we're going to be, a lot of these businesses, they don't have enough-
So this organic for organic use?
It's just for organics, yep. We could use it for other things if we decided to get into-
And this goes over the front, so when you drop it down, that sludge is going to be coming over the cab?
No, it won't be coming over the cab. So.
We'll see.
It's a pretty, that type of attachment is used across the industry.
I'm sure it'll work.
Yeah.
All right, do we have a motion to approve the, and this is purchased through that grant?
It is, it'll be refunded.
So do we have a motion to approve the concrete blocks and the tipper?
I'll make a motion to approve blocks and a tipper.
All right, we have a motion to have a second.
I'll second.
So we have a motion by Richard, and a second by Phil.
Mr. Chair, Steve, we had talked about those concrete blocks, like we had talked about maybe using someone else because of the quality of, I didn't see, it says, concrete blocks, didn't say who we're getting them from.
Yeah, I thought that was in there.
Perkins Manufacturing.
Concrete blocks in Perkins?
Okay, it's not, okay.
Different one.
All right, good.
All right. Any further discussion?
Just wondering if we need to put the dollar amounts in the motion?
And you're on both of them?
Huh?
You did both of them at the same time.
Yep.
So Perkins Manufacturing is twelve thousand eight hundred and seven ninety-three, and the cart tipper?
No, the pop, the blocks is twelve thousand three hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Yes, yeah, twelve, three in there.
From concrete block supply, not Perkins. Perkins Manufacturing is the tipper.
Yep.
So the blocks, I'm sorry, is twelve thousand three hundred and thirty-five sixty-three.
You amend, Richard?
Yep. Yep.
I'll-
Okay, good. All right, so we have a motion and a second with the amendment. Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Right, you oppose? All right, motion carries.
The second item is repairing the rotor on our Eddie Current. We keep a spare rotor if one goes bad, so we can replace it and keep operating. And so we, last, this last spring, last winter, one of the bearings went out on the rotor, so we put our spare in, and now we'd like to get this one repaired, fixed up. It's a cost of thirty-two thousand seven hundred and thirteen dollars.
Just, can you give me a, an idea what the revenue generated from this is annually, from the separation of the aluminum?
I'm guessing it's probably north of a hundred thousand.
How much?
I'm not sure off the top of my head, I can get that to you, but it's-
Well, I'm just, you know, I just want to-
Plus. It's for aluminum.
Yeah, it's a significant cost. I mean, I just, you know, that this is cost benefit to us.
It is. And I'm, again, off the top of my head, it's probably seventy-five to eighty, a hundred thousand, somewhere in there. It's, it's a lot of money. It's their biggest revenue generator.
Yeah, I know aluminum would be, but-
How long did this other one last before?
It went five years. I'm hoping this one goes longer, because they redesigned the bearings. This is an old machine. It's one that we bought, it had been taken from the Polk County one, when they refurbished theirs. We brought it here, and it's just one of those things that you have to replace.
And then, I asked Steve in Finance how much it would cost to buy a new one, and-
Four hundred?
Four hundred and five.
You know, that's a guess.
Yeah, I know. So, so that, I just wanted, I polled that, because I just wanted everybody to understand that repairing it and fixing it is way better option than paying, spending four hundred thousand for a new one.
Right.
And Mr. Chair, we betted this out pretty good. It's going to Pennsylvania somewhere to get refurbished.
So Aries is the manufacturer.
Yeah. And, you know, when we talk about capital fixes, this is the area where, I mean, these are moving parts. This is the area where I think it's just vitally important to have a capital expense, so we know, these things are going to wear out, and we're going to need to be replacing them. I mean, we're, we're not right here, but to me, in the MRF, that would be a very important place, to have capital project. And he showed, I've, I've got your plan when you plan to replace stuff.
All right, so do we have a motion to approve the, the repair of the Eddie Current Machine for thirty-two thousand seven hundred and thirteen dollars?
So moved.
We have a second.
Second.
All right, so motion by Eric, by second by, by, uh, Richard, all in favor signify, do we have any discussion, sorry? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Shane, back again.
Well, officially, good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board.
Again.
Again.
I don't know if this will go forward or not. In Finance, there was a question that came up, that they wanted County Attorney McDonald to look at. He wasn't able to get that answer in time, so before we proceed, do you want to move forward with this, or?
We can do it pending.
Yeah, we can do it pending, I think.
Okay.
So I would say we could-
Attorney approval.
We have, we can make a motion. Do you want to say what the approval, so, go ahead, explain, well, I'll explain the issue. So we, we want to, some of these are going to go to auction, and some of them we wanted to send to the Guardian Company as, as, to get credit for when they put our equipment on our new squads. And, and that amount would be more than what we get at auction for them. But we don't know if we're allowed to do that, because we paid for them with public funding. So we're checking into that.
It's kind of a trade-in. I will, I can say that.
It's a trade-in, but it's not a trade-in for vehicles, it's a trade-in for service.
And equipment.
And equipment, yeah.
For equipment.
Yeah, so it, it probably, maybe, I don't know. I would say, I, and then I, we also told, talked to Shane, obviously, other counties do this.
So we just, we just, yeah, we just thought at Finance yesterday, we should probably just verify with Brian, just to-
So we're trading in vehicles, or we're trading in equipment on the vehicles, or both?
Could be both.
Possibly both. So, so they called a regeneration program where our, our used equipment, they will take either the vehicle, or the vehicle and the equipment. And what they do, if we leave the equipment with the vehicle, they, there's another third-party person that they sell it to, that they then refurbish these vehicles and sell them to either small-town departments who can't afford to build a, build a squad car from the ground up, or actually, some of these get shipped overseas to, you know, foreign police departments to, you know, have squad cars over there. The, the benefit to us is that we don't have to pay to take all the equipment out, which is roughly between seven hundred and fifty to a thousand, you know, nine hundred and fifty dollars, I think, seven hundred and fifty to nine hundred and fifty dollars. So it, it saves that cost. And then the cost that they were, that they were giving us looked probably to be higher than what we were getting at auction for our vehicles. So there's, it looks to be a cost benefit, you know, once said and done from start to finish on the squad car builds, you know, all the different moving parts of that, looks like it could be a cost benefit. We did want to kind of vet the process out. These, these are a new model of Explorer that we have, so we want to look at maybe retaining a couple of those and doing it the old way of putting them to public auction, see what we get for that dollar value. They give us a quote on this, and try to do kind of an apples-to-apples for this year, and just run them through two different streams, and say, "This one did better, this one did better," and that gives us direction moving forward in the future. Hey, this might be a better option, or that's a better option. So what we're looking for is kind of a, a vehicle-by-vehicle, or a, a ability to approve, or approval to get rid of those vehicles on a vehicle-by-vehicle basis, based off of the, either going to auction, going through this regeneration program for the vehicle, or vehicle and equipment. Some of, where this also benefits us is sometimes some of these Fords become Chevys, so it'll go from a Ford Explorer to a Chevy Tahoe. So that equipment doesn't match up, so there's, it doesn't really make sense for us to retain that equipment, because it kind of loses its value, where if we turn that into a Tahoe, we get the credits for it, they do what they're going to do with it, and give us the money in lieu of, and then we can apply those, that money towards a different vehicle that the equipment wouldn't fit into, so.
It's funny, they, the Ford doesn't turn into a Chevy.
No, it does not. And the equipment, the bolt holes are different spots.
We change bottles, or the-
Yes.
All right.
An elementary education, so a kid visualizes this, oh, they changed it to a Chevy.
So, so I, so do we have a motion to approve the sale, the sale of the old squads, or regen of the old squads, pending approval of, you go ahead.
I'll make a motion to the list of squads to sell or regenerate, or to sell or to trade in, either the squad or the equipment. I would make a motion to these items listed in our packet, that's force, unit number four, six, seven, seven, seventy, seventy, et cetera, et cetera, to either sell at a public auction, to trade in, or trade in the car and equipment, or trade in just the equipment for the regen, or if any other county agency needs, they can sell it to another internal, because we did mention that Transit might be looking for something. I don't think this would work, but just so you have that authorization, the, the list of vehicles before us.
And then you want to add pending approval of our county attorney?
Yes.
For the regen, okay.
Pending a county approval for the regen, say, trades.
Yep. Do we have, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
So we have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, regen, that's regeneration, like fixing the car back, that's what you're, that's what that means?
Sorry, yeah, regeneration program. They call it a regen, that's their term, but it's a regeneration, so it has a life after its initial life.
All right. So a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion carries.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Thanks, Shane. All right, Kyle, only an hour late.
Do we have the REAM grant?
No, that was in the consent agenda.
Oh, sorry. I'm looking at the Finance Committee.
Wrong agenda.
Yep.
Wrong agenda, where to go.
Good morning. I have planning commission recommendations for your consideration from May twenty-eighth. The first being a conditional use permit to operate a nonprofit maker space and wood turning school. The onsite hostel portion was removed. They were advised that they could do a short-term rental on that property, but the actual hostel portion, again, was removed. Recommendation was to approve with the condition that the applicant put Recommendation was to approve with the condition that the applicant put in a tree fence between them and the neighbor to the south.
This was old business, right?
This was tabled from the previous one, yes.
I will move to, do I have to move, we have to have a motion?
Yeah, we need a motion, yep.
I'll move to approve the request for the conditional use permit for the nonprofit maker space and wood turning school.
And concur with.
And concur with planning. Concur with planning.
Findings, or, second, you want to concur with planning and zoning and approve?
Uh, yeah, so we get that fence.
It's been approved.
Yes.
No, you want to concur, you want to concur with their, with their restrictions and their work plan and then approve. That's what we, their recommendation to approve, our approval. Concur with planning, zoning, and then approve. So you were to read.
Okay.
I just have a motion by Phil and a second by Barry. Any discussion?
I just, I just wanted to note that there, this was, this does come, like, there were several, there was some concern with the neighbors, but there was also some recommend, or letters of support from area wood turners, and Project Four Twelve also provided a, a letter of support, so I think this could be a, a good.
Little niche.
Asset to the community.
Not competitive with anything else, Barry.
Okay, all in favors, okay, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries. All right.
First applicant, a new business was a preliminary plat for ten units, storage units to be known as Idle Lake Storage. Recommendation was to approve.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I have some concerns with this. It's how, it's in the Shoreland District?
Yes, sir.
It's in the Shoreland District of Lake Idah. The total property is, what, three point one six acres was being sold for residential?
Um, I can get you that.
It's, it's near commercial sites, so I mean, you're, you're, you're getting, I mean, you could argue that it bridges that, that commercial area directly across the lake, I mean, there's, there's houses directly across this site.
Three, three, three.
Three point three, three acres?
Three point three one, yeah.
Three point three one.
And how many acre, how much square footage is, is marshland on the, on the, so some of this is already lowland, that's not, that if you delineate it, it's not part, would be non-buildable? What, what percentage of building area coverage is this?
Um, so, well, that, just to answer your first question, there, there's two lower areas, it looks like the first one is probably a little bit bigger than thirty-eight thousand square feet or point eight nine acres, and then the one to the north is.
So the, the one lower area actually helps because it provides a bu, more of a buffer for the, for the.
Yeah.
Distance, so it's actually helpful. And I know they're ma, I know they have to be close to max out of their impervious surface, I haven't looked at the file, but.
They actually got a variance to be at thirty percent from Cormott Township, but I think they're at like twenty-seven point eight nine or something.
I mean, I would like, the only change I would like is to add that to make the road, the road top is considered impervious surface for, for maximum density.
And that, that would be, so they're at, let's see.
And I, and I believe that the one up on Becker five and six is not considered, that's, the road is impervious in that development?
We would consider every road pervy, impervious, every single one, whether it's asphalt or class five.
Were you currently in that now?
Yeah, we would, we would consider that. So they're currently at twenty-seven point five on this one.
That includes the road?
Yeah, and I would say, given the proposal, how it, I mean.
That's including the low areas as per, impervious, I mean, that's including measuring those also.
Yeah, but given this, there's, at twenty-seven point five, it's, it's maxed. Have you, have you saw the drawing?
I did earlier, yeah. But I know it pushes them back in that ridge line.
Essentially, yeah, when it does, so this is low here.
Yeah.
Then this is low here, and then there's a little lower there. So it comes in like this, but the buildings sit just like this, and then right there.
But, you know, residential directly across and. I think the concern, and I'm, I'm surprised Cormitt gave him a variance to increase that, but it's the, it's the coming into, you know, this is coming right into Becker County, this is all for sale on top here. I imagine this, this sale here is contingent on this approval, I would assume, but maybe not.
The stuff to the north?
The current one we're on is, I would assume, is just bought or for.
So the, the individual who platted that, those six lots, is the applicant for the storage?
So he can't complain about the neighbor doing a storage building?
No, I, I mean, I think what he's gonna say is, hey, I tried to sell them and they sat here for two years and now, and he has done more storage in the community, so.
The, the key here is, what he paid for and what his profit margin is, have no concern of any decision-making on this board.
Right.
Correct.
And.
But you can't get a better neighbor than a storage building. They don't have dogs, they don't have cows, they don't have.
Not lights. Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve the Lake Idah storage.
So we have a motion by Phil to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Richard. Any further discussion?
I just point out, I, you know, you want to make sure that these things are aesthetic, I mean, this is right on the road and very handy, but aesthetically, this is the, I mean, you want them somewhat reasonably, in my opinion, and I think that's what the residents in this area are asking for too. I mean, generally, not spec, not even specific to this one, but I mean, I think if we could have just some sort of guidelines to say, we want a couple rows of trees, just to break up the walls of.
Do you want to add that to the?
Is there room for, is there room for some trees between the?
They, yeah, so Jeff Morris did bring that up at the, at the tour, and then the applicant, he was represented by Meadowland, but they, they didn't have an issue with that, and that was actually stated at the meeting. I thought it was part of the motion, I had staff listen to the recording prior to coming down here and it wasn't, but they were okay with doing that, so.
So we just do a friendly amendment to add two rows of trees between the road and the first layer of, I mean, if that's what the motion maker, so you don't have to amend it, just friendly.
Kyle, that'd be acceptable?
Yeah, they, they had no issue with it.
I'll, I'll amend my motion to, to include a, a number of trees, two rows of trees, how many bushes?
Couple rows of trees to, between the road and the first row of building, the first building.
I, I, yeah, I think you, yeah.
If they're willing to do it, that it's not gonna be something, minimum of.
I will amend my, amend my motion to say that.
Minimum of ten trees placed between the road and the first bu, how's that? Minimum ten trees?
Okay. All right, so we have a motion and a second with the amendment, yeah, yeah, he's good. All, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all right, motion carries. All right, Kyle.
Thank you.
Um, then the last one was a conditional use permit for a small engine repair business with a recommendation to approve.
Mr. Chair, I'm not familiar with this site or anything, but is there adequate parking for the number of vehicles that will, I mean, that's one of the shortfalls with our planning and zoning when we approve these conditional uses, that we could run into if it changes?
Yeah, they got quite the.
We asked.
They got quite the.
Okay, so they're off, they have pretty good size.
Pretty, yeah.
They have a larger area, so, no, that's.
There's no issue, like the last one we had a while ago, there's an issue with getting in from the road, there's no issue at all.
No, there's existing access here off County Road one thirty-five.
All right, do we have a motion to concur with the Planning and Zoning Commission on?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, motion by Eric, a second by Phil. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion carries.
And just an update, the last applicant was that request for mining operation. The plan there would be to have a special meeting that's already been scheduled for June eleventh at eight thirty a.m., for them to consider, the planning commission to consider findings consistent with an approval, and then also some conditions, and then that, plan to have that back before you, June seventeenth.
Okay.
Um, before Kyle leaves, we want to talk about your work session, Kyle.
Yeah, I was just wondering if there was a time we could schedule, I, I think the best time would be off-board meeting week, so maybe next week or?
Next week is not, I'm in the cities, next Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
Okay. And I'm, it could be during a board week too, but I mean, if it's.
It's kind of long.
Yeah.
No.
No.
No, what?
So then it would go to the week of the twenty-third.
Uh, can we do the ninth, the Monday before? You're gone the tenth, right?
Yeah, and I'm, I'm traveling to the cities on the ninth.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
So the seventeenth is a board meeting. You know what, I guess I would consider it if we took a break.
Well, I mean, I'm just, not, maybe not at the same day, but during the same week or.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that, that's fine.
If we could, Friday afternoons really do work the best for me, but.
I love those.
That's just me.
Friday afternoon.
That is, that's, that's probably worse than trying to continue after a board meeting.
What, what about the thirteenth, Friday the thirteenth?
I can't do it.
No. Jesus, I'm just loaded up tomorrow, Thursday, but, yeah.
Just as a reminder, we're closed on the nineteenth as well.
Yeah, that's Juneteenth, yeah.
I thought we had a scheduled corridor meeting that day.
Did we? We also.
It's on the twelfth.
What about the sixteenth before, that's the Monday before?
I got, I got.
Can we do it after finance?
I, no, we got joint powers after that, and I have to go to, I gotta go to, I'm gone all day, I gotta go to Morehead.
Eighteenth afternoon?
How about the thirtieth?
Eighteenth, I have a meeting in the afternoon.
Thirtieth? What, time?
Anytime, after finance.
Thirtieth would work.
I'm off that whole week, so.
The thirtieth would work.
Sure.
Ten, eleven.
Ten o'clock?
Ten. Now, what are we gonna do there?
So my plan would be to go through the ordinance, basically section by section, and explain to you what the changes would be.
And then you want this board to tell you how to proceed, was that the?
Right.
Rather than the other way?
Right, well, basically to get some permission, yes, to proceed.
Okay.
So the work session, just to repeat back, is June thirtieth, thirtieth at ten, so that's how we'll post then, a work session?
Yep.
Okay.
Chair?
Yes.
That does put up against the window of lunch at twelve, so you got two hours.
We can order in.
We can order.
I do have one thing, I finally remembered.
Good job, Barry.
Finally remembered.
Great.
Not to do with Kyle, but, um, Board of Adjustments and Equalization, what is that?
Oh. The six, next Monday, isn't it? I don't think it's next Monday.
No, it should be Thursday, isn't it?
Isn't it the sixteenth?
Oh.
I can't remember either. I feel like it is.
The sixteenth is a Monday.
So it's on the seventeenth?
We did it on a board day. He didn't know, we used to do it on a Tuesday, but I noticed us, we decided he wanted to do it on Monday.
Well, let's get that hammered out right now.
Yeah.
And I would like, I would like to be prepared to have a class, act, class reduction of ag land, of ag land, and I want the numbers, I want our numbers for, um, our total numbers of taxable market value tax, what our percentages are for that category.
Okay.
Lisa Wilson, we're at ninety-seven percent, I know you had conflicting numbers at ninety percent.
Yep.
Get those, and then what, if we are, if the board decides to, what percentage we can lower that class to, if, if we choose to at that time.
We can do that? I thought the.
Yeah, we can, we can lower the, if it's above.
The two requirements to do that, you have to do the whole class, you cannot, below the ninety percent of values of, of sales, and you cannot do more than one percent total of your market value.
Yep.
Lisa said the one percent will limit us more than getting down below ninety percent.
Okay.
Are you gonna have a conflict of interest with that vote?
Who doesn't? Who doesn't have any conflict of interest?
Well, you said it was a rate, it was a specific category, right?
Class reduction.
What is the category?
Category, air land agriculture.
Vegan land agriculture.
Okay, so I have that, and just to verify the date, it's the seventeenth? Seventeenth, Tuesday?
And that's a six oh one?
Hold on, are we, we all gonna be there for that too?
Uh huh. We don't have to, but we have to have at least.
A quorum.
We have to go, and Mary Collins.
We're doing that after this meeting? Seventeenth is.
And so does the assessor Collins, a quorum.
To get your answer through.
Okay.
Okay.
Would you, would you like your appointment posted, Phil, for that planning?
We did talk about that earlier.
I recommend, recommend.
We did.
Have it posted, say, or vacant, or posted to Phil, let's say that.
Posted to Phil.
Requirement on a, to post it for a certain timeline when it's a.
Yeah, we did talk about that, so that was the suggestion.
Since we got Kyle here anyway, I mean, we, we talked about nuisance properties a month ago, are we moving forward with?
Yep.
That'll, that'll be one of the.
Yep.
That's the purpose of your work session.
Yep.
And one of the things that I would like to, I don't worry pause, but percentage of, of surface on storage building, community use buildings.
Do you?
Nope.
What are we doing there?
We have to, we have to say overboard adjustments.
I don't, the what we, what came out of the.
Why are we going?
The height, where, where, we can move forward with that, is that okay to move forward with that ordinance changes that we came up, that was supported by the, they were, they were alterations to zoning the.
The height of the retailing?
Yes.
Yeah.
So four feet, four, four feet lower is permissible, right?
By administration.
Was it four?
By administration, yeah, okay. Yeah, I'd forget that.
That would come before, it would actually come before you after, but it'll be on time. The week before, then the thirtieth will, will meet, and then it'll come to you. So not before agreement, but I'd like, or after work session. It's, it's in the.
All right, Terry, do you have clear direction?
I think I have it.
Do we have anything else for the good order of the order? All right, you're adjourned.
So we just set a meeting for Board of Adjustments for all of us.
Board of Equalization.
Board of Appeals. Equalization.